Calling to order, the Sacramento Board of Education meeting. Superintendent. Pledge allegiance. Please stand. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item 4.2, broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government diversion on Comcast, consolidated communication, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 9th at 6:00 p.m. and Monday, May 20th at 12:00 p.m. There will also be webcasts at metro14live@county.net and can be reviewed on Metro Cable's 14 YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which is located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representatives, along with any handouts you may have prior to the board's conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comments to items that are not on the agenda. If you do have a comment on an item that's listed on the agenda, we will ask you to please defer your comment until the item comes up on the agenda. Please either turn off your cell phones, place them on silent, or record.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to go to item 4.3, seller student introduced by board member Kayata.
Okay, Chanel, would you please come up to the podium? So tonight, we would like to recognize Chanel Young, who is a senior at Sacramento New Technology High School. We have something written for you in part from staff at your school, so like you to enjoy this praise because you really deserve it. Chanel Young was a freshman in high school at the start of the pandemic, and she quickly learned that distance learning was not her friend. She was caring for her younger siblings at home, didn't have stable Wi-Fi, and like many students, did not do well in her classes during distance learning. When schools resumed in-person instruction, Chanel was super motivated to do well. She made up all of her failed classes and worked hard to raise her GPA from a 1.4 to a 3.3. As a senior at New Tech, Chanel completed her required internship, joined the ASB leadership, completed her community service hours, and took a college class through Sac City, all while working a part-time job outside of school. Chanel will be attending CRC in the fall to pursue an AS in veterinary technology and is looking forward to fulfilling career taking care of animals. We asked one of Chanel's teachers to share a little about Chanel, and this is what she said. "I've had the distinct honor of working with her in political studies and in student leadership. Chanel possesses many admirable qualities, but the two that have left a lasting impression on me are her passion for social justice issues and her commitment to self-improvement." In the fall of 2022, Chanel wrote an editorial for our Reimagining America project, in which she successfully argued for legal protections to improve the lives of homeless individuals and families in our local community. This passion for protecting the vulnerable was echoed again in the spring when Chanel approached this teacher and very earnestly asked why they're not teaching their students about the Central Park Five, and when she engaged in a productive debate with special guests from Operated and Project and Defend regarding gun rights and gun violence in America today. Chanel is inquisitive and brave in the face of many challenges facing her generation. She is not satisfied with the status quo, and her passion for learning and making a difference is delightfully contagious. Her hope and vision for a better world in which we can all feel safe and free to pursue our dreams is at the core of her value system, and it radiates out and blesses all of our lives. Chanel, thank you for being such an integral part of the New Tech team. You have rewarded us beyond measure, and for myself, thank you also. I'm really just in love with everything you've done, so congratulations. I will ask you to say a few words, and then after that, everyone who's here with you today, and Principal Martin, please will join you at the podium for a certificate and a photo.
I would just like to give thanks to my principal and my family, and most of all, my school board. You guys have been a really big part of my education, so thank you.
All right, everyone, come on down. Thank you, thank you. Okay, announcements, item 5.0, announcements of actions taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Rhodes. There are two announcements coming out of closed session. First, the board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2023020508 by a vote of four to zero, with members Singh, Pritchett, and Phillips absent. Second, the board approved a settlement agreement to resolve litigation with the Black Parallel School Board by a vote of five to zero, with members Pritchett and Phillips absent. Further information about the material terms of the settlement will be provided after the agreement is executed by both parties.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to item 6.0, agenda adoption. There's a couple of things on here. We are, I'm going to motion to move to remove expulsion number 24 from the consent item on 12.1F, because that is actually was a misprint, and that is actually not anything that we went over as a board. So motion to remove that 12.1F from the consent agenda, because we did not actually have that on our agenda today. Also, we have a lot of people here today. So I'm also going to make a motion for, to move our communications 8.0, 8.1, and 8.2, that section there underneath 9.3, so that we have an opportunity for the people who are there to be moved up in our agenda today. All in favor of that motion, just throw a hand of aye if you're in favor. Aye? All, uh... All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. And so, to our partners who will be speaking later, thank you guys as well for your patience. Okay, so now we're going to go to public comments. Do we have any public comment this evening?
We do have quite a bit. We have more than 30 speakers signed up tonight.
Okay, due to the amount of speakers, we're going to move the time to one minute per speaker on the items, so that we can make sure that we get to everyone who else is here that will be speaking on items today. Okay, thank you. Can you please call up the public comment?
First speaker this evening is Richard Owen, and there are four other people who have yielded their time to him, so he is recognized for five minutes.
Okay. Mr. Owens, looking younger and younger daily. Looking younger and younger daily, sir.
Is it turned on?
It's not, but he's good, you're good. Yeah. I don't think it is. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Is it, does somebody press it up there?
Hello, hello?
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
There you go.
Tonight, your agenda includes a presentation on proposed strategic priorities for 2324. While we intend to weigh in on some of those ideas at a later date, we once again felt compelled to offer our concerns as it relates to those strategic priorities. We urge the superintendent and the board to make school safety an urgent school priority with sufficient funding to address what teachers, classified staff, and your school leaders have been experiencing over the last several years. Yes, our purpose and mission is to provide our students a world-class education, but how can that come to pass if we spend an inordinate amount of time on safety-related issues? For many years, this problem has persisted. Certificated classified staff have rung the alarm bells to no avail. The answer has always been yes, but we don't have the resources, yes, but we don't have the staff, and yes, but we don't want to be strict, yes, but how will folks perceive our response? Perhaps we just all have a collective big but. Perhaps we need to get our butts out of the way and finally proactively respond to these concerns. We ask this board to be our heroes and help us finally solve this problem. Consider this presentation as a raising of the red flag with blaring lights. As the violence and threats we are now experiencing may escalate into the unthinkable in our school district. We want the district to be proactive rather than reactive. We cannot and should not wait to develop policies and practices that provide maximum security and safety for our students and staff. We love thoughts and prayers after a tragedy, but we need policies, practices, and appropriate funding to do all we can to prevent this from happening in our district. Fundamental to any strategic priority is the basic need of safety for all students and staff. Given what is happening in communities around the country with all the threats and mass shootings, doesn't it behoove us to make this our top priority? Before the pandemic, we were seriously concerned about safety as the number of threats and violence were escalating in scale and frequency. Post-pandemic, we have seen an exponential increase in threats and threatening behavior, not just from students but from parents and the community. The number of fights on campuses, especially an alarming increase in fights among our young ladies, is something that needs to be addressed. We all agree that mental health, self-esteem, and different forms of trauma is contributing to this crisis. Nevertheless, we must ensure safety while we are responding to the psychological aspects of this dilemma. Who among you wants to be the one consoling a parent whose child is a victim of the unthinkable? Teachers and classified staff look to site leaders to provide a safe environment, and when that does not occur, they hold them accountable. School leaders then hold the district accountable for not having a coordinated and timely response to their concerns. The district will at times blame the board for petty politics against in the way of making solid choices. The bottom line is that both site leaders, the district, and the board lose credibility when their inability to effectively curtail this surge of violence and threats. Even more concerning, when students threaten serious acts of violence, they can often get that behavior excused depending on what their specific designation is. Last month, there was a meeting with parents at Kennedy High School that some of you attended. You heard loud and clear that something needs to be done and quickly before we have a tragic and unforgivable tragedy in our schools. With that in mind, we have some specific suggestions for the board, but before I share those suggestions, I want to acknowledge the good works of Ray Lizzado and Ryan Hickey. We are aware of their efforts and what they do. We also have met with Superintendent Aguilar, and he's heard our concerns, and we're grateful for his willingness to listen and consider our concerns. However, this needs to be a comprehensive approach with the board actually involved. Our suggestions are as follows. Assemble a district-wide safety committee that meets at a minimum monthly to inspect what we expect. This committee should consist of reps from all collective bargaining units, should meet monthly, and monitor safety in this district. By the start of next school year, harden all school sites by limiting access and forcing all parties into controlled entry points. Many sites can be accessed, and violence can occur from many different points, and I'm speeding up because of the time. A significant increase in campus monitors based on a different formula that is currently involved. I'll keep it short. They need to be paid more. They're basically slightly above the minimum wage, and they need more pay, and they need better hours, and they need to be in uniforms, and they need training on an ongoing basis. Safety plans should be done at one central place with consultations with school sites. The school district should certify all cameras and PA systems are functional and up to date and working as designed. We expect this to happen. Let me, I'll cut this short. I want to ask the superintendent of board a hypothetical question real quick, and I'll end with this. If you were arrested and charged with conspiring to keep our school community safe, would there be enough evidence to convict you? We hope after you hear our concerns and recommendations, after hearing our sense of urgency, that you will be found guilty. And that will be one of the few times in your life that being found guilty will be a blessing to you and all of us. As we always do, we hope and pray for this board's success in overseeing our district, and we sincerely thank you in advance for listening and acting upon our concern.
Mr. Owens, a side note, you have three minutes in communications, so you didn't have to, you didn't have to rush.
I rushed because I know what you're dealing with.
Got you, my brother, got you, my brother. All right. Okay, next public.
Next speaker is Hope Chan, followed by Sylvia Stevens Shaw, then Erica Chan, and then Josephine and Zach.
Beautiful. Thank you guys so much, and, oh.
Danielle.
Danielle. Can we, can we fix their, their mic potus then?
Hi.
No, no, no problem, no problem. Are you guys standing in solidarity and support?
There's quite a few of us that are actually signed up to speak.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll call, they'll call the individuals up at a time, but you guys stand there in solidarity and support as well if you would like to, totally fine. Can we still start their, their time? Is there, okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Hope Chan. I am a sixth grader at William Land Elementary School, and I am in the Mandarin immersion program. Ni hao, wo jiao chen xing xing. I spoke in front of this board in November and was very excited to see that the MIP pathways was added to the agenda as a potential funded program for the, for next school year. For those of you who are new to, to our new board members, or may, who may not remember me, I have been in Mandarin immersion program since kindergarten, and I do not live in the SUSD area. My parents purposefully transferred me to SUSD so that I could be in MIP. I, it was, it has been really sad for me and my classmates that we don't currently have a pathway for MIP in middle school and high school. This means that a lot of us who transferred into the district for this very special program are now looking at transferring back to our home districts. It also means that the hard work we put in for these seven years could be lost, since language is something that can easily be lost if not used.
Thank you so much. Uh, next, next speaker? Well, they'll call the name up. You're going to call the name?
Next is Sylvia Stevens Shaw.
Sylvia Stevens Shaw. And then they have, can you start her, her time?
Hello, my name is Sylvia, and I am in third grade from William Land Elementary School. I really like making friends, and speaking is kind of how I make them. So since English and Mandarin, I kind of like, to me, seem like one of the two biggest population of languages so far. And if I'm able to keep up Mandarin and master it, I'll be able to talk with more people, and I will be able to make more friends. Thank you. Xie xie tadiya, which means thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Next speaker?
Next is Erica Chan.
I wrote a whole thing, so I apologize. Hello, my name is Erica Chan. I'm Hope's mom. We've been extremely fortunate to have been a part of the William Land Elementary School community for the past seven years. Not only is the school and all the staff and faculty amazing, but it's also afforded my child the opportunity to learn how to read, write, speak, and understand Mandarin, something that I wouldn't have been able to teach her myself. It's been, well, I'm gonna skip through a bunch because it's like a minute. When we've come to board meetings before and reached out to board members before, it's always seemed quite hopeless. There have been so many classes, five actually, who have actually aged out and promoted out of the elementary Mandarin immersion program that have missed out on the opportunity and the chance to learn more Mandarin and to continue growing. And they've also, many of them have also left this school district. So these kids deserve better from this district. Our kids who are about to promote out of this program deserve better. As parents, a couple of years ago, we pooled money together to pay for a zero period at Sutter Middle School, that the, so that the district could see that we were willing to fight for this and that the parents and students wanted this. It's not sustainable for that to continue, so we really ask that you guys vote to keep this program going.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next is Josephine and Zach.
Hi, my name is Zach.
Hi, Zach.
I keep my school in William Land, speaking Mandarin, because your family, because my family speaks a little Cantonese.
And then we just want to keep the traditions and learn the culture and just have that for his future, so that he can have that ability to use that to learn more languages or learn any other subjects. It really, we think that it helps them learn a lot besides just the language and speaking to other people. So we just want to keep that going so that he can keep using it, so he doesn't lose it after learning it for six years or seven years.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Christopher Noe.
Thank you so much. My name is Chris Noe. My son is Benjamin, and he's a kindergartner at William Land. I'm here along with my wife to voice our support for the expansion of the dual-language immersion program. As parents of kindergartners, you might be wondering what we're doing up here. We have a few years left to worry about middle school and high school, but we've been very active volunteers this year at William Land, and we've seen firsthand what the product is. We worked with the sixth graders in various volunteer events. When we visited the school, they were the ones that gave us a tour. They were the ones that fielded our questions, and these kids are truly leaders. And, I don't know, we don't know this firsthand yet, but we've heard as kids transition to middle school and high school, it can be kind of topsy-turvy with figure, finding yourself, dealing with social media, et cetera. These kids are really well-grounded, and if they have this program to continue, it's going to be one thing that they're working extremely hard and keeps them grounded, as they've been doing this since kindergarten. So I ask you to continue to support this program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Next is Chu Tong.
She's gone? Okay, next speaker?
Kaylee Tam.
Hi, my name is Kaylee. I am a sixth grade student in the Mandarin immersion program at William Land Elementary. My brother Owen is in kindergarten in the Mandarin immersion program. Please support language immersion programs for middle and high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Joe Stevens Shaw.
Hello, Mr. Shaw. I believe you can lift that up too, if you want to, but if there's more children speaking, then keep it down.
I'll put it back there in a second. Hi, my name is Joe Stevens Shaw, parent of two children in the Mandarin immersion program at William Land. I just want to express my support, like everyone else, for extending the pathway through middle and high school, and just really want to thank you all for your time and attention to this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amy Lynn.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Liu. I'm a mother of two, and I'm also of county and 4E. I just want to share with you, this program is not only for us, but it's for everyone here as Americans. As you may agree, tension has been rising between Minin and China and the US. And do you know how much money we owe Minin and China? One trillion, one and twelve zero dollars. What does that even mean? Three thousand dollars per head. So for Sacramento County, we owe Minin and China four billion dollars, four and nine zeros. So the money that you invest to our children and continue their development in the proficiency in Minin and China, they will be playing a future crucial role in a system with any relationship between Minin and China and US, either cooperation, competition, or last or not last, least negotiation for our debt. So your five million dollars sounds a lot, but compared to 800 times debt that we have is worth your investment. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Falk.
All right, thank you, board members. My name is Mike Falk. I've got two children in the MIP program. While there's a lot of obvious benefits associated with bilingual, I think there is, as my kids entered in the Mandarin program, there are five key items that really resonated with me that I didn't think about beforehand, that I think the values really should factor into some decision-making. First off, stronger social connections. These kids, you've got a mix of native Mandarin speakers, native English speakers, and some kids in between, and they really lean on each other for the Mandarin piece as well as the English piece. So there's a really strong social bond. What's also come of that is I've actually seen our kids are more grounded in native English as well because of that leaning on each other. They've really advanced that piece of it, and it's also followed by this cultural respect that they've learned through the program. So those are really my first three. My fourth point is the ability to focus. It really takes a lot for these kids to get through this, and I've just noticed with other kids, they don't have the distractions. And lastly, just the ability to be proficient in language.
Thank you, sir.
And support.
Next speaker is Jim Stanley.
He, he's gone.
William Downer.
Thanks for your, I hope this is on. Good afternoon, my, my name is William Downer. My daughter is enrolled at, in the Mandarin immersion program at William Land Elementary. I'm speaking today in support of expanding the Mandarin immersion program to middle schools and high schools. I just want to say I'm very grateful that this program exists, that it's staffed by wonderful teachers and administrators who have developed and implemented a stimulating curriculum for our kids. Coming from a non-Mandarin-speaking household, I was very skeptical about the, my child's chances of being successful in this program, but seeing my daughter progress through the program, the friends that she's made, the support that she's gotten, has given me tremendous confidence in the program and belief that it can be sustained through high school, excuse me, middle school and high school. Approximately 15% of the world's population are native Mandarin speakers, so it stands to reason that we should fund this program through middle school and high school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Peyton Newton.
Hello, my name is Peyton. I am a student at William Land Elementary School. I've been doing this for about seven years now. Wo, wo chong wu sui lai da we liang xiao xie. Wait, wait. Yeah. Wo, wo chong wu sui lai da we liang xiao xie. Wo, wo zai liang nian ji. Wo hen xiang wo de tong xie men. Wo hen, wo hen xiang. Wo, wo hen xiang xie zhong wen zai zhong xie.
Next speaker is Deitra Newton. Dear, yeah, De-.
It's Deitra.
Deitra, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So my name is Deitra Newton. That is my daughter Peyton Newton, and one of the deciding, we're not from Indiana, I'm sorry, we're not from California, we moved here from Indiana. And one of the deciding factors for us to move here was the fact that there was the Mandarin immersion program here in Sacramento. And so when we came and put her in, she's been in it since, obviously since kindergarten, and what I've seen them do, how they teach the children and how much they've learned is amazing. And one of the issues is that if they don't continue it, as you guys know, if you lose, if you don't use it, you will lose it. And we didn't put her in the program just for her to learn it up until the sixth grade, and then there's nothing. So I'm pleading with you, as most parents are, every parent is here in this, that you vote to continue this for the kids, so that they don't forget what they've worked so hard to learn for the last seven years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tao Nguyen.
Hi, my name is Tao Nguyen, and I have three kids who are Sac City students in the MIP program. I have two here in elementary, and I have a freshman daughter. She just took her AP exam. She just took her AP exam for the Mandarin AP exam, and she felt quite confident, but we had to do a lot of work to get there. Her seventh grade year, she, we had to find private tutoring to continue it because if you don't use it, you lose it, right? And then her ninth grade year as well, we had to find private tutoring. But luckily during the eighth grade year, we had our wonderful parents pull money together, even parents who weren't in the program or weren't in Sutter yet, pulled money together and they were able to have a teacher teach it, but that ended. So if you can continue it, it'd be wonderful because more students will have access to confidently taking the AP exam and also getting the state seal of bilinguality, which I see a lot of people are here for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speakers Abraham Lo and Jerlo.
Hey, good evening. My name is Abraham Lo.
And I'm Jerlo.
And I'm Nigil Lo.
This is our son, and he's a fourth grader at the, he's in the Mandarin Immersion Program in William Land, and he's been in the program since kindergarten and he absolutely loves it and actually thrives really well and has been able to speak really well Chinese, even though we do not speak Chinese at home.
Oh, our home district is Natomas, but we transferred to Sac City Unified just for the Mandarin program. We gave him this opportunity to learn more, to learn Mandarin, so please, please support the program. It's a beautiful program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker from this group, I believe. Am I correct?
Just call the names and...
Okay. Next speaker then would be Shannon Just, who is recognized for two minutes, another speaker has given her his time.
Okay, Ms. Just.
Normally I anticipate really well. I should have had a couple more people donate my time. So it's been a couple months, right? Been a few months. I think the last time I spoke was February. I'm out here for the same reason, right? Back to community schools. So I was trying to allow the process to play out, right? So, you know, we thought we were getting there. We had a meeting on March 22nd, and it was a relatively constructive conversation, right? Nothing resolved, obviously, but constructive conversation. And we had another meeting scheduled for April 12th. Well, that meeting got canceled on April 10th at the request of the district because they weren't prepared. They weren't ready for the meeting. And we were supposed to reschedule. There's been no other meeting, right? So we're now at the end of March. We've now wasted a full year. It's a full year of community schools where the money's there and nothing's happened. Other than that one briefing by the Student Support Center Coordinator in January, we've heard nothing. We've had nothing about progress, nothing about what's happening. We know, because I got called in to small group to have a discussion and ask some questions and have conversations, that's not really a true needs and assets assessment, right? It was a constructive conversation. But again, you're asking these community school coordinators to do two jobs. They're not community schools coordinators, they're student support center coordinators. They're trying to do double duty. It doesn't work. We've lost a year. Our communities and our schools cannot afford to throw away years. Students have lost a year of opportunity for us to provide additional services for them. We need help. Attendance is horrible. Our effective daily attendance rate is in the seventy percent. It's not the ninety percent that gets published. If you take the per-period absences, it's in the seventies, and it's in the low seventies. This isn't working. We have to do something. I, we can't teach kids who aren't there. We gotta go out to where the kids are, where the families are, figure out why they're not coming to school, and get them the help and the support we need. We don't have the personnel to do that. Community schools' funds could be used to do that, and you need to let the schools decide, not the district, how that money gets spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Blaze McGee.
I go to Rosemont High School, and I wanted to discuss an issue on the fact that we need to have health classes in our, in our schools. This is something that goes to our day-to-day lives, and this is something that, there's a lot of stuff that we're going to do anyways. Like I'm talking about sexual health, mental health, healthy relationships, all of that stuff. And so today I collected student data from my school, and a lot of, I asked people, do you think we should have health classes in schools? Eighty-one point two percent said yes, and about thirteen percent said no or other. And one asked, what are some things you'd be interested in learning in a health class? Some responses said stuff like how to take care of babies, what to do in certain real-life situations, how to deal with toxic friendships. Some said how to take drugs safely. Others said, I would like to learn how dangerous drugs really are and how to, like, treat them, meaning like if things get bad or like, you know, stuff like that. And so I just wanted to say that this is something that, like, we're going to do anyways. People have told me, oh, people are going to make fun of it. No one's going to take it seriously, but I think that's why we should have it, just to normalize these conversations.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Shannon Schmidt.
Thank you, Board. That was really great. My name is Shannon Schmidt. I'm the principal of the California Montessori Project. I'm here this evening again in my efforts to familiarize you with our special little Montessori charter school. I'd like to share with you tonight the focus that we've been placing on diversity, equity, and inclusion in our network. Through a professional development partnership with Sac State, we've been engaged in a book study with all of our staff, exploring a book called Start Here, Start Now by Liz Kleinrock. And through this work, we're learning to engage in difficult conversations with both students and staff. And we're also being able to provide meaningful and deep DEI lessons to our students. Additionally, we were inspired to audit our entire campus and classroom libraries, allotting eight thousand dollars in PTO money to ensuring that students see themselves represented in our literature. We have also been insisting that our events and our after-school opportunities are all free. We've been pursuing opportunities like street soccer, kinder dance, and after-school plays. Thanks so much for welcoming me again tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ken O'Flaherty.
I am a history teacher at Kennedy High School. So first, I want to welcome those of you who are new to the Board. You have a real chance to change the trajectory of tens of thousands of students in our school district. The topic of my request today is about the grading scale that's mandated for the high How many of you get paid for not showing up to work? What message is it sending to students if we reward them fifty percent for not turning anything in? Is that setting them up for success? Why are we setting our students up for lower expectations? And why, why does the student population continue to dwindle over the last several years in this district? The answer is that we are failing our students. The grading scale that teachers are being required, are being required to use, where students get fifty percent for not turning in any assignments at all, or even plagiarizing, is completely lowering the bar for our students.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Tyler Baird.
Sure, over here.
Do you want to, you know, raise that?
Hello? It's working?
Yes.
Hello, my name is...
She's just raising that for you.
Oh, thank you. Hello, my name is Tyler Baird. I go to JFK, I'm in 12th grade, and I'm here for the same reason that the previous presenter was, to talk about my experience with the fifty percent policy. Starting with some data I took with one of my projects for my gov class, I polled thirty percent of the teachers at our school, which is thirty-seven teachers in total, and I just want to go over, it's in the packet I gave her, but I just want to go over some of the main data points from it. So it's all Lincoln scaling, by the way. So for the statement, students are more motivated to do work because of the fifty percent policy, seventy-eight percent of teachers strongly disagreed with twenty percent of the teachers disagreeing. As well as for the statement, students do more work because of the fifty percent policy, eighty-seven percent of teachers disagreed, and eleven percent of teachers strongly disagreed. And for the question of, should the fifty percent policy stay in place, sixty-seven percent of teachers strongly disagreed with forty percent of teachers disagreeing. So with all this data and looking over your guys' data, well, I know it's a different Board, but looking at the previous data that the Board implemented, I don't see any actual data on the Google Doc that you guys gave to the public on why you guys implemented the policy. So I hope with all this data, you guys can see the, some of the cons and how, why the teachers aren't liking the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Sergeant Major Javier Sparza.
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for having me today. I don't come prepared with as much data as young Tyler, but I do hope that you, honors requests, at least review the material he has submitted. Instead, I come to you with anecdotes from students who are not in the top ninety-nine percent of their graduating class, who do not have a four-point-five GPA, perfect attendance, and perfect behavioral record. Instead here tonight, I'm representing the rest of our students who I interact with and belong to Sac City Unified School District. They look at this as an opportunity, and we know this from being parent ourselves, that sometimes the path of least resistance is the most enjoyable one. It's the easier one to take. And I ask that when we look at young Tyler's data, that we ask ourselves important questions, who is being left behind? What is the outcome of this policy? I'm not here to point fingers, I'm not here to ask for any immediate action. I'm saying that this isn't anyone, this may not be anyone's fault, but it is at least our responsibility to look into it and ensure that we're serving our children as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker has yielded her time, so Monica Harvey is recognized for two minutes.
Good evening, good evening, Board members and superintendent. My name is Monica Harvey. I'm a language, speech, and hearing specialist. We're also known as speech-language pathologists, and for short, LSHS or SLPs and speech therapists. They can, all those terms can be used interchangeably. May is Better Speech and Hearing Month, and today is National SLP Day. The district has thirty-nine SLPs along with several retirees. The district also has thirty LSHS openings using LCFF funding and thirteen openings using CARES funding. That's a total of forty-three openings. While these openings have temporarily been filled by outside contractors, hiring contractors is not the solution. SCUSD needs to respect teachers and speech therapists so that people will want to come and work for this district. What is needed? Well, let me tell you some things. Number one, a calendar for the 23-24 school year. When do I start? That is the question that new hires need to know exactly when they will start, and parents need to know when their children will start school. Number two, a salary schedule for the 23-24 school year. A job description that has been updated. Our job description is forty-seven years old. It is outdated and has descriptions that are unacceptable to people with disabilities. We need to hire earlier. I want to end with Happy Better Speech and Hearing Month to all of my colleagues. The LSHS, who work with students from ages three to twenty-two, are a hard-working and dedicated staff. We are making a difference in the lives of students here at SCUSD.
Thank you.
Next is Emma Bailey.
Hello, my name is Emma Bailey. I'm a senior at John F. Kennedy High School, and I would like to speak about a program I want to raise awareness for that could benefit the entire district. The EQ Ambassador Program was a program that was launched at John F. Kennedy High School that demonstrated a number of benefits, and it was dissolved last school year. The EQ Ambassador Program was a group of students on campus who were peer mentors and advocates of social-emotional learning. They led community circles and mindfulness activities in classrooms, facilitated conflict resolution and restorative practices, and mentored students. These resources are important because they prioritize students' mental health and social-emotional learning, which can contribute to academic success in the classroom. Through a survey I conducted at John F. Kennedy, seventy-five students out of one hundred students surveyed that have worked with the EQ Ambassador reported that the program helped them understand and manage their emotions more effectively. Unfortunately, the program was dissolved due to staffing and funding issues at my school. Despite the large amount of support I have built, the administration has struggled to bring back the program. If this program were implemented, high schools across SCUSD would provide comprehensive resources that create a safe space for students and give them tools to succeed after they leave high school. I would like to conclude by urging you to support John F. Kennedy in its efforts with bringing the program back, and consider how this program could be implemented at high schools across SCUSD.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next speaker is Franchelle Brown.
I am not here to complain, although I could, but I'm not. I'm actually here to say thank you to Trustee Singh for that wonderful workshop he gave about safety. And I'm going to make this real quick. Am I being detained? I want a lawyer.
I just wanted you to know, I took it to heart what you said, and it was sad, but a couple of days after we had that meeting, we, me and my sons had to use what you, what we learned. It's very sad. We had to actually use that, and I'm so grateful to you for it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ursula Dewitt.
I would like to invite any other parents that are up here tonight to support the Black Parallel School Board and our action that we're having tonight. Marian, I would like to invite you to come up, please. All the hard work you do. And I shortened this, so. Phones, okay. All right, I'm ready. All right, so, good evening, Sac City, USD, Board members and superintendent. My name is Ursula Dewitt. I am a parent volunteer with the Black Parallel School Board, and I'm here tonight because I'm actually in mourning. We have on our black because our students are not doing well. Black scholars aren't doing well. You all know this. Year after year, this is a prevailing issue for black parents, right? How our students are doing, how do we get them on track? Suspension rates, of course, for black students are super high. They exceed the rate of the state, and we're doing very bad in math and English all over the district. Through the district's racial injustice, oppression, and a lot of incompetence, black scholars as a collective continue to fail under your care. In 2019, the Board adopted sixteen recommendations to improve the academic outcomes for black scholars. Today, I'm here on behalf of black parents to demand implementation now and to actually add on to the list three hundred... add on to the list 300 instructional aids to be delivered to the lowest-performing schools. Between the racist hateful incidents black students and parents are subjected to, to egregious inadequates in staffing and incompetence, we are here to say no more. We demand an end to implicit biases and anti-black practices happening every day on your campuses. It's overdue time to put your words into action and ensure black scholars thrive academically.
Thank you.
Fun and implement the recommendations now. And across the planet, reparations to repair the harm caused to black people are happening, and it's time for Sac City to pay up and invest in black students.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Next speaker. No more speakers?
All right. Seeing there's no more speakers, we're going to go to item 9.1, which is State Seal of Biliteracy and Civic Engagement.
Good evening, President Rhodes, members of the board, and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Olga Sims, Multilingual Literacy Director, and...
Linda Kingston, Director of CTE and Master Scheduling, along with Dr. Lee.
And today, I will be presenting and recognizing our wonderful scholars for the State Seal of Biliteracy. Very briefly, our State Seal of Biliteracy is recognition by the State Superintendent of Public Instruction for graduating high school students who have attained a high level of proficiency in speaking, reading, and writing in one or more languages in addition to English. And Linda will be presenting.
And we're here this evening to present our second year of the State Seal of Civic Engagement and to congratulate all of our great students.
So we are going to show a video for the State Seal of Biliteracy, but before we do that, I would like to ask our State Seal of Biliteracy recipients to please stand and join me in congratulating their efforts. Three criteria that needed to be met for the State Seal of Biliteracy. Our students needed to have a 2.0 cumulative ELA GPA, at least a 3 on the 11th grade CAS ESPEC ELA exam, and they needed to meet the language requirement through the SCOE, a Reading and Writing Exam, or at least a 3 on an AP exam, or a 3.0 cumulative GPA. Our students have worked very hard, and some of our students have actually multiple languages that they're proficient in, and so that is a great recognition. So if we can please enjoy this wonderful video that really demonstrates and shows and showcases all the hard work across our district of our students that are really, really proudly representing us today, and our families, and of course, teachers, and everyone that was involved in this process, and a special recognition to Ms. Melanie Bean, who couldn't be here today, but who coordinates the State Seal of Biliteracy for our district. Thank you.
And now on to the State Seal of Civic Engagement. Got the PowerPoint? Eight minutes, remember fast. Okay, so the State Seal of Civic Engagement, this is, as we said, year two. The Sac City School Board adopted it two years ago, and we put together a committee. So we're going to do a brief review, so next slide, please. We're just going to do an overview and then get to the recognition of our students. Next slide. Just to remind ourselves that we really are grounded in the work, the core value, that we recognize that our system is inequitable by design, and we've diligently worked to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level playing fields and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and reach their greatness. And of course, our guiding principle is all students are given the opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. Next slide. The State Seal of Civic Engagement addresses this core value in a deep and meaningful way. It takes our kids from our communities that do not normally engage and allows them to actually participate in the decision-making process.
So what is civic learning? Civic learning is about learning through participation in the decision-making around us on matters that are important to us and impact us. So through our efforts with the State Seal of Civic Engagement, we aim to recognize and support Sac City students who apply their learning and participate in decision-making that affects them. And we do this, well, this is done by having students actively learn and research about issues and problems in their communities and work with others, whether that's peers, experts, neighbors, community partners, to understand multiple perspectives to develop feasible and robust ideas and solutions to those problems. And this is kind of recognizing that because the systems of power or process for change has largely been invisible to marginalized communities, we want to make sure our students practice engaging with decision-makers around the issues that they care about. So the process of change becomes visible to all students, especially those from marginalized communities. By doing so, we aim to support our students to become long-term partners to disrupt the multi-generational legacies of systemic inequality. Next slide. The district's thoughtful efforts on the State Seal of Civic Engagement have made it a model resource for the state, such that, as you can see, the California Department of Education actually features Sac City as one of only two districts in the whole entire state in terms of resource for the State Seal of Civic Engagement. And click next, oh, no, next slide. And furthermore, my statewide work group, Authentic Preparation Today, have the privilege of having the district present its seal efforts as a model for leaders across the state to learn from, and it's also featured in the Civic Seal website as a supporting resource as well, too. Then lastly, Sac City has also been invited to be a panel to talk about its seal efforts in the California State Board Association convening this fall. Next slide. So, high-quality civic learning should be transformational, requiring multiple mindset shifts, where we're asking students to not just think about self-interest and personal gain, but to consider applying their learning to support community needs. We don't just want students to gain knowledge. We want them to apply their knowledge and their learning and intellectual capital towards informed action to make a difference, to make an impact. We're asking teachers not just to be drivers of learning, but to also make space for student passions and lived experiences so that students can mold their own learning. And through the seal, we're here to recognize that learning doesn't just happen in the classroom, but it happens outside of the classroom, in the community, and virtually as well, and we need community partners to do this. So time is running through. And we, so I want to take a moment to thank all the folks who have come in. And this is hard work, and it's transformational, and I want to thank Linda here, who's retiring soon, for kicking that whole process going. Okay, right, so I'm going to skip through the rest apart. The whole point is, this is hard work, this is transformation work, and we have people coming out of the woodwork to actually pitch and to do this, and I can't name all the people who have come in because I don't have time. So we're going to keep moving forward. But before we do, I also want to take a couple minutes for one of our students who is a multi-year recipient and a student ambassador to actually help a bunch of students, other students, to cross the finish line. Kayleen Nguyen.
Hi, I'm Kayleen. I'm a student ambassador for the State Seal of Civic Engagement. This is my second year applying for the State Seal. When I first signed up, I didn't even know what civic engagement actually was, but Dr. Lee here helped me understand what it requires to actually engage with a decision-maker. And I was afraid at first, but eventually I overcame my fear and realized I just needed the confidence to take that first step, and eventually realized and began to understand the importance of civic engagement. So once I realized how easy it was to actually just take that first step, I wanted to become a student ambassador so I can be able to encourage others and help them overcome the barrier and be able to make a difference in the community, too. And without this experience, I don't think I would have realized the importance, and it really impacted me. So I'll be majoring in Urban Studies and Environmental Science, so I can work for local government in the future with environmental policies and legislation.
And with that, at this point, we would like to recognize our students that have excelled in student civic engagement and civic learning this year. So at this time, will all of our juniors and seniors who have been come up to the front so you can get your certificates? Mr. Aguilar, would you like to come down and help us pass out certificates? Mr. Aguilar, would you like to come down and help us pass out certificates, please?
So, hey, can you go back to, okay, I'm just gonna name them. All right, so starting with CK McClechy, Audrey Batega, Leo Taramina, from Health Professions, Myla Villalobos, from Kate Carson, Cielo Lopez, Mauro Perez Lima. Cielo. So, this is Kate Carson? Oh, Myla's right here. Myla's from Health Professions. Kate Carson is Cielo Lopez. And Mauro Perez. From Luther Burn Bank, Adava Muscher, Aiden Carrera. From Rosemont, Esperanza Buja, Jade Luis Polis, Quincy Oliver. No, Esperanza, this is Esperanza. From JFK, Alex Yu, Angela Valasuela, Ariana Jiang, Brianna Mar, Emma Bailey, Jamie Gress, Jocelyn Landek, Cameron Ichio, Catherine Hong. She's Emma Bailey. So Catherine Hong. Oh, Jocelyn Landek. Cameron Ichio. Kayleen Nguyen. Kiana Nakaoke, Lauren Hamm, Lucky Pop Moore, Madison Sayare, McKenna Suwa, Marissa Gong, Serenity Sealy, Sydney Shimoto. And I skipped London Yay. And I skipped London Yay. Did I skip anybody else? Oh, sorry. And Leanna Blackman from Health Professions.
And one more time, congratulations to the 2023 Civic Engagements. Hold on, I think a board pitcher, a board pitcher? Ladies and gentlemen, we need a pitcher. We need a group pitcher.
And, sorry, I also missed Adriana Graves-Vargas from West Campus. And since everyone's here, I want to say.
Nope, don't say last words, go ahead.
Approve the recognition of the 25th anniversary of Parent-Teacher Home Visit Resolution. Hey! I enjoy the energy you bring with you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent, Board President Rhodes, and Board members. My name is Kelly O'Deppo, Director of State and Federal Programs, and I have the distinct pleasure of introducing Gretchen Viglione, Head of our Parent-Teacher Home Visit Program here at the Serna Center in the District Office. Today, in honor of the 25th anniversary of the Parent-Teacher Home Visit Project, Gretchen would like to talk a little bit about this program and how wonderful it is and how important it is to our district. So Gretchen?
Thank you, Kelly. Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Gretchen Viglione, and I am the Parent-Teacher Home Visits Training Specialist here in Sacramento City Unified. I have served in Sacramento for the past 25 years, first as a classroom teacher and now as a training specialist. I would like to thank Superintendent Aguilar for recommending this resolution, along with all the district staff who helped bring this resolution before the Board. I also want to acknowledge all of the supporters of Parent-Teacher Home Visits who are joining us tonight in honor of this monumental achievement. They can be seen in yellow, blue, and green, wearing the 25th Anniversary stickers, which I also have available for all the Board. They're back there. Change slide, please. There, thank you. Parent-Teacher Home Visits is a program that was founded right here in Sacramento in 1998 through an extraordinary partnership between Sacramento area congregations together, Sacramento City Unified School District, and Sacramento City Teachers Association. All of these partners have remained committed to this program that facilitates relationships between home and school for the last 25 years and are represented all across this room tonight. The founding parents just wanted something better for their kids. They dreamed of better connections to their schools, stronger partnerships with their teachers, greater success for their students. And they were successful. Change slide, please. In fact, they were so successful that this Parent-Teacher Home Visit Program that started here in Sacramento, spread across the country to 28 states, Washington DC, and now internationally in Saskatchewan, Canada. This all spread through word of mouth. People wanted to know what was happening here in Sacramento, what was bringing home and school together. They wanted to learn about us. One person who heard the story of PTHV in his beginning teacher program was Mr. Vu Pham, who I'd like to share his PTHV experience right now. Change slide, please.
Good evening. My name is Vu Pham, and I'm a math teacher at Fernbaker Middle School. In 2016, I was a Sac State student and a Robert Noyes Teacher Scholarship recipient. I tried a home visit training program with my Noyes friends. When I got the job at Fernbaker, I was so happy because Fernbaker had the home visit program, and I participated in the home visit. The first semester I got my job at Fernbaker. This school year, I completed nearly 50 home visits for my students. I have many great experiences that I could share with you, but today, I will share two stories. First one, Phoenix is a student in my competitive math class for eighth grade when I met Phoenix and her family on Zoom, even though it was the first time I met the parents face-to-face. Phoenix's parents told me that Phoenix went home every day and told her parents stories about my class. We had a great conversation about Phoenix's dream, her education goal, and her family activities. After the meeting, Phoenix worked very hard every day to get the perfect scores in my class because her parents support Phoenix and me to achieve higher performance in her education. The second story I want to share is about Kenji. Kenji is a student in my regular math class. After I met Kenji and his parents during the home visit, Kenji's mother shared her family's story of having four children in the house. She shared the difficulty that she has to deal with her children every day and her hope for Kenji as the biggest brother in the house. I also shared my student life's experience with Kenji to show him that getting higher education helped me to change my life. Together, Kenji's mother and I helped Kenji to see the importance of staying focused in school. After the meeting, Kenji's parents donated tons of school supplies to my classroom, and it was easier for me to contact Kenji's parents whenever I needed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Vu, for sharing. Stories like Vu's are not uncommon, and I receive testimonials like his from educators all across our district, from all grade levels, all the time. Change slide, please. A few of our educators who have also been greatly impacted by Parent-Teacher Home Visits will formally represent Sac City Unified at the 25th Anniversary Reception as part of the Institute of Educational Leadership Conference in June. And if you are here, please stand. Pauline Arribey from Ethel Phillips, Kang Barrows from Nicholas, Haley Sweeten from Nicholas, Jill Campbell from Oak Ridge, Angela Bride Jones from Parkway, Cheshua Beckett, Rosemont, Cindy Semcue, Hiram Johnson, Erin Veditasic and his brother Thomas Veditasic from Elder Creek, Mike DeSantis from New Joseph Bonheim, Shelley Fries from Isidore Cohen, Alba Rivera Valdemar from Oak Ridge, Maria Galarza from Edward Kimball, and Pauline Brown from Hiram Johnson. Next slide, please. In closing, I would like to extend my personal deepest appreciation for everyone who's supported Parent-Teacher Home Visits for the last 25 years. Parent-Teacher Home Visits is part of my story, not just as an educator, but as a human being and a member of the Sacramento community. PTHV showcases our community, union, and district at its finest in this crowning achievement based on cooperation, teamwork, and commitment. PTHV represents what is truly possible for our students and families in Sacramento. If you're here tonight to show support for PTHB, please give the program a round of applause. And please help me to recognize our own Sacramento City Unified School District founding parent and now grandparent, Yessenia Ramirez. Yessenia will accept the Board resolution on behalf of the Parent-Teacher Home Visits Organization. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Superintendent, it is an honor to be here with you today. It's been 25 years, wow, it seemed like yesterday. It was 1996 when my little girls were in elementary school, and today, they're all grown and women. I am so excited. My heart feels so full to be here in the room with all of you today. I was a single mom of six little girls that came from an abusive home and an abusive relationship and escaped from San Jose to Sacramento, and that's how I ended up here with my six little girls and a job, and that's all I had for myself. And I found myself surrounded by amazing, beautiful people around me like Sacramento City Unified School teachers. Our community organization that came and helped us and really guided us and helped us do better for our community and our school. And of course, our wonderful Teachers Union, who always supported us as well. So it is an honor to be here with all of you today. And especially, I want to thank this beautiful woman for all the work that she has done and all the hours she has put, because I don't think anybody has any idea how much time she puts into Parent-Teacher Home Visit. And I want you to know that as a mom, and as one of the founding moms, along with my dear friend who's in heaven now, Jocelyn Graves, we are eternally grateful to you for all the work that you have done. And to all of you, Danny, thank you for everything you have done for my own children. Ms. Campbell, thank you for putting my 19-year-old now grandson where he's at. Thank you so much. Thank you, every single Angelique. My goodness, what can I say? Tommy, every single one of you. It is an honor to be part of this district still. I have 10 beautiful grandchildren who are still going to our district, and I'm starting all over again, but with a lot of love and a lot of passion. Thank you so much.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do. David Fisher has signed up.
Hi, good evening. David Fisher, President of Sacramento City Teachers Association, also a founding teacher in the Parent-Teacher Home Visits. I got rocking my CB Wire t-shirt, yeah. Back where it all started, 1996. Yes, and you're not surprised I'm that old, but yes, it's been around a long time. And the model is successful because it's powerful, and it's powerful because it's successful because of the way it started, the way it grew, and the way it continues. It's modeled on collaboration. From the very beginning, it was Sacramento City Teachers Association along with Sacramento area congregations together. Area Congregations Together, community organization, and the district. And I don't know if you noticed, but we don't always get along. And however, that relationship has kept it going and has spread it throughout, not only our district, but the nation and even the world. And I can't let this go completely because we have been trying to propose other projects based on the exact same concept, and it's just been fiercely rejected. And we just, a little bit of self-reflection on where we could have been, where to start our practices, and where we should be going with community schools, based on the exact same concept, all right? Just can't help but say that because we look at the power. If you would just, you know, not hold on to your power so tightly, realize that when you share it, it actually expands. It doesn't shrink, and sharing it with the community and sharing it with the teachers and everyone else is only going to help grow this project and other ones if we can just also use the same kind of ideas. But I just want to say that. Thanks, everyone. And Yessenia, te quiero mucho. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I don't have more public comment. Okay, so we're going to go to board comment and discussion. Anybody who would like to make any statements from my colleagues, please hop in the queue. Member Singh, I mean, sorry, Member Kayata. Sorry about that.
One of the first things I did after I became a board member was meet with Gretchen and learn more about this amazing program, and I'm really happy to have you here today. And I'm emotional about it, too, not that I've been involved, but just hearing it, and I can feel the energy. So thank you, and to thank everyone else who's involved in this, and I'm really glad that we have this here. And I agree with David Fisher. This is representing what we should be doing in this district, is bringing all the amazing people who are in our community who want to help our kids together. Thank you, and congratulations, it's been 25 years.
Member Jean.
This program was one of the first I heard about when I started thinking about running. And I'm just so amazed at the, I think you said it best in the three words you picked at the end of your speech, if you can remind me of them, because they were so good.
Cooperation, commitment, and dedication.
Dedication, yeah. Cooperating, committing, and dedicating together. And I just, I'm, yeah, I don't have great words. I think I'm just going to piggyback on what Member Kayata said. And I know I've been invited to join, and I definitely want to participate and go with one of you lovely people to see it in action as soon as my schedule permits, which is just crazy at the end of the school year. But I'm looking forward to learning more about the program and continuing to support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Member Villa.
I will keep my word short because, of course, everybody always sometimes says the exact same thing, but I just want to say congratulations. This is a phenomenal program, and you're really changing our community and families' lives, so thank you very much to all of you. It means a lot.
Thank you. And we're going to go to, this time, Member Singh for real.
For real, for real. Yeah, I can't follow up with all the great words. I just want to say I was, this was one of the first things that I learned about when I was, when I started running for school board, and I have yet to go on a visit, and I would love to do that sometime soon. So thank you, everyone, for coming out. And I will say that when I was teaching, we didn't have parent teacher home visits, but let's just say I did a few on my own, because that's the only way I could figure out how to get through to some of the kids and make that connection with their parents and the teachers. So I just really appreciate you presenting and so grateful that you all have done something so amazing for 25 years. So hopefully, we continue to support you all, and you get to continue this program as long as we can, we can even think about it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Member Phillips.
Takes a village to educate a child as well as to raise. And I went on a parent teacher home visit and had probably the best time of my life walking into a safe zone, because I walk into homes as a social worker, and I come with fear, and I come with the law. And what I saw during that meeting was parents being willing to share what they knew was going to help their children, and that openness. So, I mean, I'm telling you, if I could write a check today for this to last for the next 100 years, it would probably be a really good thing. But LCAP Goal Number Five, parents, families, community stakeholders, and students, we have to do it together. And this obviously happened organically, and so the other changes that may need to take place or most definitely need to take place, we have to look at it as something that will happen organically and embrace that process. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'll say a quick word for you, Superintendent. Couple things. This is fantastic. I think my first exposure to this whole thing was actually, my father was an organizer for ACT, and so when this actually started, he was actually organizing Jim Ketti, all those folks. So I come from that background. But more recently, my kids were beneficiaries to this. So my Sariano, my Sagalarza, and then, and then also friends, Ms. Kimball, that are here. And I, I just, I just want to say that my son is in ninth grade currently, and my youngest daughter is in first grade. And we have had parent visits at the beginning of each year, and I remember my son Giovanni was anxious about going to kindergarten, and we, we worked with Giovanni a lot. Giovanni taught, I think, the teachers and myself a lot. And so, but being able to build that relationship early on and understanding that we are a team together, and then having the students also know my children to also understand that they're also part of home, right? And so, very valuable, invaluable to what it's done for my family and obviously what it's done for so many families across the district. So, once again, this is beautiful work, and we definitely need more of it. And however we continue to support you is, I think that the board is in full support of that. So to the teachers that are in the crowd, David, for you being there at the beginning, for the mother that started it up, and for all the parents that are here today, we support this. And as a parent, taking off Board President hat, as a parent, I am greatly indebted to the teachers and the individuals who have impacted mine and my children's lives so powerfully. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Ms. Viglioni. Thank you for your presentation and everyone that's here this evening. I get to interact with Ms. Viglioni pretty often because her assistant sits next to my office, and so I see her very often, always advocating for this program. My first memory of the Parent Teacher Home Visit program was on the first day of my role as superintendent on July 1st of 2017. I accompanied Mr. Castro from Earl Warren and walked across the street a couple of blocks to visit a family there. And I treated that visit somewhat as part of sort of a destiny in that the family, their siblings, the siblings that we had gone to visit mirrored my own children. One was entering third grade, twins were entering fifth grade, and they had another child as well. And it was a wonderful experience seeing how Mr. Castro had gone to visit that home several times before to be part of conversations with the eldest child in that family. And over the years, I've had the opportunity to visit more families. Ms. Viglioni, every time I've asked her, has been very generous in organizing a visit. We did a visit in December near the Rosemont area. And one of my best memories, Ms. Viglioni and everyone else, was returning back to visit Earl Warren with Mr. Castro, who was working with a former student who he had gone to visit through this program and now was serving as an aide at Earl Warren, getting ready to become a teacher. And I'm sure that he is still there and doing fantastic work, but the idea that I was able to hear how things happen in terms of full circle, being a student and then working alongside and still seeing Mr. Castro as one of his heroes, and the parent who also spoke very highly of Mr. Castro was just a testament to just the value and the importance of having these types of programs. So congratulations to you, Ms. Viglioni, and everyone else.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is an action item, and so we will take, it says action item, I don't know why, but we will, who would like to move? Who would like to second? Second, second, second. All in, oh, let me do the roll call. Let's do it officially, right? Roll call vote, please. Student preferential?
Yes.
Member Jean?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Member Kayata?
Yes.
Member Phillips? Member Rhodes?
Yes.
Member Singh?
Yes.
Member Villa?
Yes.
This motion passes unanimously with members who are present. Round of applause to you guys. Thank you, guys, for your work. One last thing. We want to present this recognition from the board, and if we can, we'll come down with you and get a picture with you and the board, but then also, everybody who's here to support, we would also like to take a picture with you guys as well. So we're coming down, and we'll see you guys right in like two seconds.
Thank you.
And then, come on in, come on in. Yeah. It doesn't matter.
A sticker should be.
Yeah, anybody wearing stickers, blue, yellow. Come on in, come on in, come on in. Come on, David. David, come on up, man.
Oh, of course.
Come on up, David. Is there, is there also? Oh, there's more pictures. Oh, sorry. Okay, Kobe. I wanted to, I wanted to take a picture with Kobe. How's it going? All's good. Receiving the family. Yes? Yes, you're welcome. Okay, so moving to item 9.3, Approval of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Resolution Presented by Board Member Singh. Oh, we approve.
Yay. All right. Should I wait? Okay. All right, so I have written something. I will start, so I'm trying to not sound robotic, but so May is Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and this month, we celebrate the diversity of cultures, the breadth of achievement, and the remarkable contributions of AAPI communities, communities who picked up their lives and found their homes here, of indigenous communities for whom these lands will forever be home, and us, their grateful guests, and of community leaders shaping brighter futures for us all. I just want to give a shout out that those of community leaders include civil rights activist Yuri Kociyama, whose birthday is tomorrow, May 19th, which is also the birthday of Malcolm X. Hardships faced by our ancestors paved the way for our lives, yet we continue to see persistent racism, harassment, and hate crimes against our communities. We continue to see attacks on Asian Americans, including the most recent mass shooting in Texas in which a white supremacist shooter is said to have harbored anti-Asian beliefs, which led to four of the eight victims being of Asian descent. I'm committed to creating a safe environment for our AAPI students, our staff, and in doing so, creating a safe home for everyone of all backgrounds. Sacramento is home to some of the largest and first Asian American communities in California. There are so many organizations that I could dedicate tonight's resolution to, yet tonight I have the honor of dedicating this resolution to the Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance. Unfortunately, their executive team was unavailable to be here tonight to accept the award. Just like to say a few words about them, and then I will happily read this resolution. So APALA was founded in 1992, is the first and only national organization of Asian American and Pacific Islander workers, most of whom are union members and are allies building power for AAPI workers and their communities. APALA envisions a society where economic and racial justice prevails, human rights and worker dignity are affirmed, and where a healthy, sustainable planet is able to offer a better life for Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, Black, Brown, and Indigenous folks, and all communities fighting oppression. Some efforts by APALA Sacramento include having recently signed on to SB 403, which aims to end discrimination on the basis of caste. And the Sacramento chapter president, Orne Limanaparesit, spoke at a rally and vigil to remember the Asian victims of the 2021 Atlanta shooting at the Californian Capitol, and also testified at the California State Legislature on behalf of Assembly Bill 2596, which will institute the Lunar New Year as a state holiday. So I just want to read this. I made a few tweaks. They're not major, but I'm excited to read this. So Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education Resolution Number 3324, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas one of the earliest records of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans in the United States dates back to 1763 in New Orleans, Louisiana, where Filipino sailors who worked the Manila-Acapoco trade route settled. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have made indelible contributions to the history of California and the United States that includes but are not limited to building the Transcontinental Railroad, serving honorably in the armed forces, co-organizing the Delano Grape Strike, and advocating for civil rights. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have endured hardships, including unjust working conditions, prejudice, discrimination in some of the darkest times in our states' and nations' history, including the Chinese Exclusion Act, the Immigration Act of 1924, naturalized citizenship and eligibility, the Alien Land Law, anti-miscegenation laws, I'm having a terrible day speaking, Japanese internment camps, post-9/11 racism, and most recently, anti-Asian hate. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans continue to cultivate, advance, and lead in the field of art, fashion, business, technology, education, science, government, law, humanities, medicine, sports, and entertainment. And whereas California is home to over 6.3 million Asian and Pacific Islander Americans, more than any other state, and Asian and Pacific Islander Americans are one of the fastest-growing ethnic populations in the state and the nation. And whereas California is home to the first Sikh ordwara in Stockton, at the Stockton Sikh Temple, and the first Buddhist temple in San Francisco built in the United States. And whereas Asian and Pacific Islander Americans constitute 16% of California's population and represent diverse ancestries from Central Asia, East Asia, Hawaii, Pacific Islands, Southeast Asia, South Asia, and West Asia, all who account for over 60% of the world's population. And whereas California's Asian and Pacific Islander American entrepreneurs are innovative and lead many successful businesses to the pinnacle of their respective industries nationally and globally, and 31.5% of the nation's Asian-owned businesses are in California. And whereas Sacramento City Unified School District is home to more than 9,000 students who identify as Asian American Pacific Islander. Whereas federal law designates May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in Section 102 of Title 36 of the U.S. Code. And whereas celebrating Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month provides Californians with an opportunity to recognize the achievements, contributions, and history of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans now. Therefore, be it now, therefore be it resolved, that the month of May 2023 and every May thereafter be recognized as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in SEUST. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Singh. Do we have any public comment on the item?
We do not.
Do we have any board discussion? If there is some, please hop in the queue. Okay. Member Jean?
Member Singh, thank you for bringing this to us. I really appreciated the, all of the wonderful details and education that was included as part of this. And I look forward to celebrating Asian American Heritage Month in May for hereon after.
Thank you, Member Jean. Okay, seeing that there is no other board discussion on this resolution, we will, we have a motion to move forward? Yeah? Okay, second, second, second. Student preferential?
Aye.
And superintendent?
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with all members who are present. Congratulations. Now, going to... No. We'll go back to communications. Yeah, back to communications. We're going to bring up, not yet, actually, it's kind of flipped around. So we're going back to communications, SCTA. Vote yours, sir.
Good evening again. David Fisher, President of Sacramento City Teachers Association. So if my math's right, there are 19 days of instruction left in the school year. So I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize all the hard-working teachers and educators and other certificated staff who, despite the chronic understaffing, have continued to go above and beyond the call of duty. Despite what feels like to teachers as outright hostility from the superintendent and his leadership team. For the first time that any of us can recall, I don't even think the district even went through the motions of celebrating Day of the Teacher. Earlier this week, Superintendent Aguilar signed a new memorandum of understanding in which, after we were forced to take legal action, he agreed to abide by the MOU he signed to settle the strike last year. And because he failed to honor the original agreement, staff who have performed extra work last year will receive an additional 7% in interest payments. What does it say when once again Mr. Aguilar backtracks on another agreement and is compelled to sign another legally enforceable agreement to simply honor the agreement that he originally signed? Unfortunately, it's more of the same. When we settled the strike once again, he agreed in writing that negotiations for a re-opener would commence, quote, "on or before December 1st, 2022," end quote. Our first bargaining session occurred March 29th, 2023. We've met three times, and in that time, the Labor Relations Team led by Superintendent Aguilar and outside consultant Pam Manweller and outside counsel Lozano Smith have reverted to the bargaining strategy that provoked an eight-day strike one year ago. Despite being in the best financial position in Sac City history, the district does not appear prepared to address the massive staffing shortages that plagues the district. If you listen to the superintendent, he believes somehow gutting seniority rights in Article 8, the transfers article, is somehow going to retain staff in Sac City and make it more attractive place to work. There is no transfer section that applies to top administrators, and they are fleeing the district in record numbers. Since the beginning of the year, Chief Business Officer, Chief Information Officer, the Director of Health Services, the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, have either left or announced they are leaving. Maybe there's a more basic problem in the district in Article 8. The district's team comes to the bargaining table unprepared. Despite an increase in LCFF funding of 34.06% over a six-year period, salaries for certified and classified staff have only increased by 4%. Say that again. 34% increase in ongoing funds that last for never, never, not one-time funds, but funds that come in forever, 34%, certificate and classified, 4%. The district proposal for an additional 6% increase hardly makes a dent in that inequity. Tonight, on the agenda is a presentation with options related to the district's strategic budgeting priorities. Is ensuring that every student has a qualified and certified teacher in the classroom reflects the diversity of the district one of those priorities? At the bargaining table, the district has not provided a meaningful response to our proposal on Article 17, which is class size and staffing. The outlines of our proposal were developed with Superintendent Aguilar ironically, and then summed up in a written agreement when Mr. Aguilar himself signed in November of 2017. At the time the agreement was reached, he agreed that those jointly developed priorities were his priorities too. We also thought that when we settled the strike, that addressing the massive vacancy issue and improving services to students were priorities we shared with the district. The district economic proposal does not adequately address the recruitment and retention problems that hinders learning in this district. And on class size and staffing, the district has rejected every one of our proposed improvements, every single one. Lower class sizes 4 through 6 rejected. Lower class sizes for secondary rejected. Reduction for caseload of special education staff rejected. Improved staffing for school nurses, librarians, social workers, behavioral intervention specialists, program specialists, school psychologists, all rejected. Community school specialists rejected. Intervention teachers rejected. It's worth knowing that since Mr. Aguilar has been superintendent, the number of ministers have increased from 251 to 324.2, full-time equivalents. That's a 29.2% increase. Finally, I want to discuss community schools. As you have seen, educators in Oakland recently ended a very successful seven-day strike. The issues will sound familiar, the need to recruit and retain staff, the need to improve services to students, community schools, and so on, a strike prompted by the district's unfair practices. PERB has already issued a complaint against the district over its refusal to discuss community schools. After two years of delays, the district finally agreed to meet with us on March 26th. We presented a proposal for truly shared decision-making, similar to what many school districts throughout the state have already agreed to. The district canceled the follow-up meeting and promised to reconvene. Another six-week delay. We have had to threaten the superintendent with additional legal action. But rather than responding, as he promised, with a follow-up meeting to discuss our proposal and to move toward reaching an agreement, Mr. Aguilar emailed us a so-called proposal that apparently has not been seen or approved by the school board. We say apparently because we can't believe this board would support such an anti-parent, anti-community, anti-student, anti-unit, top-down proposal, which mirrors the original Oakland Unified response that prolonged the Oakland strike. In contrast, that with my comments earlier about parent-teacher home visits, and you get the point. So one of two things happened. Either Mr. Aguilar drafted a proposal based on the board direction, or he did it on his own. Either way, it's problematic. The district has now been awarded over $25 million in community schools grants. We've been doing membership meetings throughout the district. It's really sad statement that in so many places, not only were the teachers not aware that their school sites were community school recipients, but the principals were unaware. Such a lack of transparency supports the claim that Mr. Aguilar is using those grant funds to supplant funding that is already in place, which violates both the spirit and the letter of the law. Another top-down initiative from the Serna Center that is destined for failure. How many times does this have to be repeated until the board does something about it? There are 19 instructional days left in the school year. There's still time to right the ship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. SCIU? No, okay. TCS, Teamsters, UPE? Do we have any, item 8.2, any of our district advisory committees in space? Okay. 8.3, student member report? No? Okay. Okay, so we're gonna, actually, superintendent, you had?
Yes, thank you so much, Member Rhodes, and appreciate your generosity with this. I just wanted to take a moment. I do see a special guest in the room, in the back. My wife, Consuelo, is here, and she typically doesn't come to these board meetings, but she's been accompanied by one of my favorite, if not my favorite cousin, Fernando Aguilar. We call him Ferny, who's here visiting from Tijuana. And I just want to say thank you to him and, of course, to my wife for her forbearance. We don't have our children, they're all at home. But certainly do want to just recognize that they, I asked my wife not to come to these meetings, but she's here today, and she brought my cousin Ferny, so thank you very much.
Welcome to our meeting, Ms. Aguilar. Next, we're going to move down to 9.4, Ms. Flores. Now, the floor is yours. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Rhodes, Superintendent, and members of the board. I'm Victoria Flores. I serve as your Executive Director of Student Support and Health Services here tonight to present Board Resolution 3319. May is Mental Health Month as well, so I'm just not going to read the board. Is this working? Yeah? Let's see. Maybe I need to turn it on. Let's try that. No? There we go. I'll do the, they'll click through. So I'm not going to read the board resolution to you, have it in front of you. I just wanted to highlight some really relevant points about this month. So May 11th is also National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And we know that children and families can achieve a better quality of life with effective, culturally relevant, responsive resources, treatments, and community support within that whole system of care. And that really does include schools. So much of our children's lives are lived in schools, and so we make that natural connection point. And so every month, our department sponsors a postcard. We send out these green ribbons that I see you all wearing. Thank you so much. And this month, we lifted up, we all need safe spaces, particularly after coming back from COVID. So really just helping to lift this up and inform our school staff how they can lean in and create safe spaces for themselves, as well as the children and their colleagues they serve with. Next slide, please. So I wanted to pull out some of the really relevant data that we're seeing most recently. So the Centers for Disease Control does this youth risk behavior survey. It's like a 10-year kind of compilation, oh, can't find my words tonight. And there are some really startling trends that come out. And we know that this is somewhat into the pandemic, and then we know beyond the pandemic, we're probably going to see some of these trends continue. So nearly three in five teen girls experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopeless in 2021. That's double that of boys and the highest level reported in a decade. The percent of students who considered, planned, or attempted suicide is high, and it has increased over the years. And if you've paid attention to our student support annual reports, you've probably noticed that trend here in Sac City as well. This is a really startling trend, though, because when I started working in schools, this was not the case, that the highest rate of suicide attempts are among Black and African-American students, and they used to be among the lowest. So this is something we know we need to attend to. And LGBTQ youth were substantially more likely to experience all forms of violence and had worse mental health outcomes than their heterosexual peers, which makes, you know, our Trans Day of Visibility Resolution and those types of actions so incredibly important. Next slide. So I want to leave you with some hope, because we do know what works in schools. And so the CDC recommends these three overarching strategies. Improve mental health supports, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Provide improved professional development and health education to our adults, but also our students. And improve connectedness and create safe and supportive school environments. We heard a really great example of that tonight with parent-teacher home visit. And it starts with these kinds of programs. We know that creating a community where everyone feels comfortable reaching out for the support they deserve is crucial to ending stigma. And we know that focusing on prevention and early intervention, when we start to notice those warning signs, greatly reduces the number of children experiencing serious mental health conditions. We all have mental health, and sometimes it's good, and sometimes it's not as good. And that's normal. But when we stay in that not as good for long periods of time, that's where we become concerned. Next slide, please. So we ask the board, now therefore be it resolved that you recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month in honor of raising awareness, reducing stigma and discrimination. And this is not a comprehensive list, but I just wanted to say, really commend the district for so many things they're doing to support mental health and well-being, addressing the social-emotional needs of our students, expanding school-based mental health and physical health supports throughout our district. You'll hear more about that tonight. Providing care coordination for mental health and substance use treatment to not just our students and our families, but our staff as well. Providing ongoing professional development around suicide prevention and many other topics, and then support and resources. So we respectfully ask you to pass this board resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Flores. Do we have any, we have any public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment. Do we have any board discussion around this resolution? Just hop in the queue. Member Kayata?
Thank you for bringing this resolution and calling attention to this. I feel like I quite often compare our school now to my schools when I was growing up. But I spent a lot of my childhood looking for help. There was teachers you could talk to, but they weren't trained in this. The concept of mental health didn't exist in the 90s. Having this, I can just see is invaluable to our students. And lifting up and making, normalizing mental health being a priority just as much as physical health is so important. I do appreciate also that we're going to talk in the next item about ways to commit to this more than this resolution, because we know that we need counselors in our schools, we need nurses, physical health, mental health combination, and we need to work with community partners. We do, but to continue that work, because we can't solve all these problems ourselves. But thank you for this resolution.
Seeing there's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, there's someone else in queue, okay. Member Villa?
Yes, again, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, you know, when I started on this board with my fellow board members, we were in, going through COVID. And it was the most challenging time for adults, but for our children. And coming through that, and all of the work that you and your team did, and what this district, again, working with so many community partners and getting these resources out to students, saved so many students' lives. I mean, I've talked to so many people who've said, I didn't know about that. I didn't know about that. Or this person told me, I can call this person. I just, we've been talking this week about the clubs and, you know, having that conversation with those folks this week of saying, now we have these resources on school sites. So I just appreciate this resolution. I appreciate the work that's being done. It is the kind of work that truly changes the trajectory of people's lives to stay alive, to be healthy, and also to share that with other folks who need that support. So we need that at our school site more than ever. There were so many different sections of this resolution that really stood out to me. Whereas the children and youth experiencing mental, emotional, and behavioral health needs and their families can achieve a better quality of life with effective, culturally relevant, and responsive resources, treatments, and community support within a system of care. And that's what we're doing. So thank you. I'm very excited to support this.
Seeing that there's no other comments, do we have a motion to move forward? So move? Second? Second. Student, board member preferential vote?
Absolutely.
Superintendent?
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Absolutely.
Member Phillips? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh? Member Villa?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with all members present.
President Rhodes, if I could just, also just interject here. Today is the last board meeting for Victoria Flores. It is with a very heavy heart, but also happy one, that I want to inform our community of this. Victoria, of course, as you know, has served as our Executive Director of Student Support and Health Services. She is moving on to a new and exciting position after serving in that role for the past eight years. She has been appointed now as the Dean of Student She has been appointed now as the Dean of Student Wellness and Support Services within the Los Rios Community College District. She will. Victoria, of course, will continue to serve and support our Sac City students, including students across the greater Sacramento area, as they pursue their college and career goals in higher education. Victoria, as a graduate of both Sac City and Los Rios Community College District, she is heartened to continue serving in the higher education system that launched her career, while also sad to be leaving our Sac City team. I just want to mention a couple of the many contributions to our students, staff and families that she's been part of, an advocate and a leader, first and foremost, in expanding the district's mental health supports to all of our students and families. Of course, when we saw the COVID-19 pandemic, it changed all of our lives. Victoria quickly collaborated across departments, very cross-functionally, and school sites to develop strategies to navigate an unprecedented emergency for our school community and became one of the go-to public health experts that media and families turn to for guidance and clarity. And I'll just say that also included the state entities. A California Department of Public Health often sought her advice. Districts contacted me very often. Districts took our return to health plan, changed the colors and changed the graphics, but essentially mirrored what Victoria led in putting together for our community. And of course, last year, her work on the return to health plan was recognized by the California School Boards Association for Innovation in Times of Crisis, and we received the Golden Bell Award, and some of you were there. In addition to her dedication, hard work and expertise, what our team will miss the most about Victoria is her warmth, calm and sense of humor, no matter how much pressure she's under. I have never seen any sense of anxiety in Victoria in my almost six years as Superintendent. So Victoria, congratulations on behalf of everyone here at Sac City Unified. Thank you so much for your many years of service to our community.
Thank you so much. I will miss you all dearly.
Okay. We're going to move over to item 9.5. SUSD Strategic Priorities and Investments.
President Rhodes and Board Members, as Rose and our team come up as a group, I just wanted to frame a little bit. Tonight, we are presenting you with additional details of the many budget proposals that were presented to the Board at our last Board meeting. And we're also going to make sure that we respond to some of the inquiries that Board Members made about what you perceived as the absence of items in that budget proposal. So I want to make sure that I frame this properly. Our team is here to provide greater details about each of those investments, how the calculations were made, what our ideas and thoughts are for implementing those. And we would, of course, like to see and hear from the Board what your deliberations are as to the areas that are most important to you for us to continue to discuss as we continue the budget development process into June before you adopt a budget. I have asked Ms. Ramos to spend some time giving you a bit of an overview, not just for you, but for our entire community, about just the budget development process, where our budget is today in terms of projections, which is all we can do, especially as we look at out years. And then she will be followed by every one of our staff members that you see here in front, giving more details about the different proposal, investment proposals that we are bringing for your consideration. And then we will end the presentation with a couple of items where you did specifically ask for more information to come back to you specifically in the area of safety. So that is the agenda for the next 40 or so minutes. We hope to get through it and then give you as much time as a Board to deliberate and give us feedback.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Board Members. And let me get to this presentation. Was this? Not working? Okay, thank you. Yep, I think it might need a battery. Acronyms, if you could just go ahead and skip to the first actual. There you go. And this is just a reminder of the information, the financial information we presented to the Board last. And this was our second interim financial report that we presented in March. The only difference here is that we are now showing an additional year. And the reason for that is because in a couple of weeks, you will be seeing the new budget information for the coming year, which does include that fourth year, which is here. So we thought it was important for you to see that and the projections for that year. Of course, that there is some data that we do need to update, primarily May revise, and any other actions the Board may take to include in the budget. But just to kind of calibrate everyone as far as what our revenues are projecting, going out that far, and our expenses as you make new spending decisions for the coming year. Next slide, please. And this slide here, I know, very busy, but we just wanted to give it, we thought it was very important that our public and of course, our Board just had a little bit of background of what goes into preparing the budget. We get lots of questions about what are the assumptions that we use? Are they things that we come up with our own? Are they prescribed? It's a combination. These are prescribed. These come to us from a couple of sources, the state primarily, the Department of Finance and the state enacted budget when that happens. And what we've done here for you is we've provided the percentages by each multi-year in addition to the current budget year. And then the very last column, we've also listed the impact that each of these factors has on our budget, whether it's a revenue or whether it's an expense. I'm not going to read them all. You guys have the PowerPoints, a lot of data. We have a lot to get through tonight. But just so you can see the factors, that some of the factors that we use, these are factors that all other school districts in California use as well. Next slide, please. This one is a little bit more local, and it is more specific to Sac City, but nonetheless, of the same areas that you will see in other budgets. These are for our health benefits, our step in column increases for both our classified or certificated, and then our operating cost products and services. And yes, our percentages change depending upon what kind of business we're engaged in that particular year. You are seeing a little bit of an uptick in 2223. We had a couple of major purchases, mainly in the area of technology and our textbooks. And so you're seeing in 2324, a little bit of an increase as well, as we wrap up some of those textbook purchases that were approved a couple of years ago. And then they kind of start to level off. Where you're going to see some differences primarily is in the health benefits. It just depends on what's going on in the market. And we work very closely with our providers to kind of gauge what's happening in the industry, what we can expect. We meet with them a couple of times a year, just to understand where we're trending, because we do need to be prepared to pay for those health benefits, since we do pay primarily for most of those. Let's see, next slide, please. And then this information here, again, we've heard a lot about comparisons, comparing our district to other districts, and how do we measure up as far as ending fund balances are concerned? And of course, it's not always an apples to apples. Our demographics are different than our neighbors. Some of them are larger than ours, some of them are smaller than ours in terms of ADA. However, we thought it was important, because there's been a lot of discussion about our ending fund balance in comparison to our neighbors who have also large ending fund balances. One of the main differences right now at this point in time is that our neighbors have already settled their negotiations through 2324. So when you compare their ending fund balance with ours, although ours is trending probably in the top three, please keep in mind that ours do not include settlements for negotiations. So once that happens, depending on where we land, our ending fund balance, of course, is going to look different than that. Just wanted to point that out. And then any other investments our Board decides to take as far as future other purchases or other investments based on tonight's presentation. So that, that, that's that slide. Next slide, please. And then a lot of discussion about our big COLA we got this year, the 13.26%. You know, the question is, where did it go? Why isn't it available? Here is a slide pie chart ready for you that describes where that went. The majority of that 13.26% went to support ongoing increased costs in these various categories, as you will see. So this pie chart lists those categories by dollar amounts. So after all is done and said, just to summarize, about, I would say, nine and a half percent of that 13.26, not of, but 9.5% deducted from that 13.26 was left over for new ongoing expenses. So the, on the left of that pie chart, where it says LCFF increase remaining of 12.2 million, that's what was left over for new ongoing costs of the 43.9 million. And the rest was primarily to support our pension cost increases, our step in column, health and welfare, and our contributions to routine restricted maintenance. What you're also seeing here is that we were not able to take that full 13.26% because we have declining enrollment. So we had to account for that. So the way the formula works, you put in your ADA into this very lengthy formula, and of course, it's saying, oh, you're dropping in ADA. So then you don't get the full application runs through, and then we had leftover, it amounted to, I believe it was, we netted maybe 11.16% of that. So next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Okay, if you could just go back to that one slide. So just wanted to explain the 13.26%, that it was not all available for new and ongoing expenses, but it really went on, went to sustain our budget. And it was probably one of the first years where we were able to balance our budget and not have to dip into our reserves to make up for those expenses. It did not have a funding source. So in summary, we need about an ongoing COLA of about maybe eight to nine percent, depending on what's going on in our budget, to really have a balanced budget every year. And just to say, our budget is definitely balanced where our revenues equal our expenses. And so we, you know, this is one of the first years we've seen that. So that's just an overview of our financials. And now I will turn it over to our Chief Academic Officer, Yvonne Rehn.
Good evening. The next few slides that you're going to see are some data slides. And I just want to say, these slides are not new slides to you. You've seen these slides before. But I want you to just be thinking about these slides, because they really are critical to, for, to ground you in why these slides connect to this presentation tonight. It's critical for you to see that connection between our student outcomes and our problem of practice, as well as our strategic priorities and our LCAP. So I want to take a few minutes, just kind of give, to review and give you an overview of what, how the data is organized. This data is our ELASback data. And you'll notice that the data is organized in bars for four years, consecutive years. There is a missing year, and that is the year for 2022, excuse me, 2021. And that is that skipped year, that paused year for COVID. You'll also notice that is arranged by our different student groups. The zero line indicates the line of proficiency, minimum proficiency, where students, minimum proficiency towards the standards. You will notice that there are two groups that minimum proficiency is above the zero line. The remaining groups, minimum proficiency is below the line. What's important in this slide is to see the five subgroups that are enclosed in that box. Those student groups in those, in that box are the students who are significantly, to have disproportionate performance. Those are our students who are achieving at a disproportionate rate as compared to other students. The math ESback is organized in a similar fashion, and you will notice the same patterns. But you also will notice that all of the bars are below that minimum proficiency. Again, the similar pattern in our student groups that are performing at a disproportionate, disproportionate rate. And those students are English learners, our Pacific Islanders, American Indian, foster youth, African American students and students with disabilities, as well as our homeless students experiencing homelessness. This particular data slide is ESback data arranged by ethnicity and race. The colored bars, the four colored bars on the side arranges that data by proficiency levels. I want to bring your attention to the two lighter blue bars on the far right side. And that, those two bars are standards met or exceeded, and then also the percentage of standards met or exceeded. So the number of students, as well as a percentage. The red, the red box that is enclosing are those numbers for our white students. 60% of the students meet or exceed standards. And I want you to notice the difference in achievement between our African American students and our white students. The difference between 60% and 19% meeting or exceeding standards. ESback math by ethnicity and race, it also demonstrates that same pattern in achievement. The next couple of slides are to show you a different function. We see that when we organize the data, in the previous slides, it gave you a percentage. We want to think about what are the factors that contributed to the differences in achievement? We tend to think that attendance and suspension and socioeconomic status is a factor in student achievement. But when we look at or control for those differences by just choosing those students or sorting those students who do not have those factors, those students, by just sorting those students by students who are attending, who have, students who have no suspensions, and students who are not socio-economically disadvantaged, we still see those persistent gaps in achievement. And similarly, we see the same pattern in math. When we control for attendance, where students have 96% attendance and above, no suspensions, and they're not socio-economically disadvantaged, there still is a persistent gap in achievement between our African American students and white students. We also can look at our student outcomes in terms of cohort A through G rates. Those are students in cohorts who graduate, who are able to, or qualified to attend UC or CSU. This data shows you those students, at what, those students, the percentage of students who are able to do that, and it's broken down by ethnicity as well. Again, you'll notice the patterns and trends amongst our groups and those groups that achieve a disproportionate rate. Thinking about how we use this data, we analyze the trends and patterns, and then we go through a root cause analysis. What is causing this? And once we. And once we develop or determine what those root causes are, we try to determine, well, what is this problem of practice? What are we after? What are we trying to get after? We have defined our problem of practice as we're failing to define or implement a coherent professional learning model, a professional learning model, learning model that is focused on high quality tier one instruction and one with a multi-tiered system of supports for students. And in particular, for students who with significant, that with this significant racial disproportionality. In your packet, you have two source references, one for the strategic priorities, as well as one for the LCAP goals. For the next portion of this presentation, I would like for you to use that, those inserts to refer to as we proceed through the rest of the presentation. I'd like to call Crystal Thomas to present our LCAP goals.
Board members, I just want to make sure that everybody has that document. I see member Phillips. What we're requesting is that you keep the document that is color coded along with the LCAP goals. What we've done at your request is we have indicated for each of the budget proposals, which of the strategic priority areas they are connected to, as well as which LCAP goals that Ms. Thomas is going to describe to you, each of those budget proposals are connected to as well. And I think that it would be easier for you to have those two documents in front of you.
Greetings, Board President Rose and our superintendent and board members. This is my first time in front of you, so I'm excited. The LCAP is a tool to set goals, plans of action, and leverage resources to improve student outcomes. Each of our 11 goals is tied to our five priorities, and together, they tell our story. For example, looking at goal one, graduation and post-secondary options, if we think about our linked learning career pathways in order to prepare students for the rich and robust curriculum of these sequence of courses, students have to be exposed to high quality instruction. Because of the rigor involved in not only the courses, but the industry credentialed assessments, academic interventions in ELA and math through MTSS will ensure our students are adequately prepared for certification. As we look at strategic priority related to culturally responsive professional learning, there are instructional decisions that staff can make to ensure student success, both academically and socially emotionally. As we consider priority four, districts are challenged with a national teacher shortage and the ability to recruit and retain teachers with industry credentials. In the event we are unable to staff these courses, we want to ensure that every classroom can be supported and learning uninterrupted. The interconnectedness of the five strategic priorities and the LCAP goals provide opportunities for streamlined investment, which will lead to better outcomes for our kids. I'll pass the torch to Erin Hansen, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, everyone. Joining me tonight are two members of our curriculum and instruction team, Shannon Pella, who you've had the opportunity to meet before, our Director of Professional Learning for Literacy, ELA, and Humanities, and Matt Coleman, our MTSS Director. Next slide, please. Oh, I have it. I'm sorry. Okay. I'm presenting, I'm revisiting our proposal on professional learning. So currently, SAC City does not fiscally or structurally support and require professional learning beyond the weekly collaborative time structure, which in itself is not utilized in a consistent manner across school teams and school sites. This lack of structure and investment in professional learning, as described in our problem of practice by Ms. Wright, has resulted in wide variation in instructional knowledge, skills, and practices, inconsistent and effective collaboration, low student achievement, and significant disproportionality among our historically underserved student groups. This total 8.8 million investment in professional learning is designed to address that variance and includes designing and delivering professional learning for anti-racist, anti-bias, and trauma responsive practices. As the foundation of our universal tier one supports, we provide all students, but specifically designed for our historically underserved students. Along with best practices for high quality instruction and interventions, establishing professional learning structures in the form of pre-service and compensation for ongoing professional learning, providing job embedded coaching and feedback for leaders and teachers through adequate staffing and an expanded site-based mentor teacher model, and finally, partnerships with critical educational experts in the anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma responsive, and professional learning communities. Additionally, please know that educator professional learning and retention research shows us that teacher quality and school leadership facilitated by high quality, standards-aligned professional learning are the most important factors in raising student achievement. Further, high quality professional learning is in the best interest of our teachers and the students they serve, and improves job satisfaction and efficacy, which in turn contributes to retention. Thus, the investments contained in this package alone address four of our strategic priorities and nearly all of our LCAP goals, as you can see across the bottom and at the top. I will pass it on to Shannon Pella to share with you our proposal on high quality instruction.
Thank you. So if you recall the slide presented earlier, that even when achieving, I mean, even when controlling for high attendance and no suspensions and no socioeconomic disadvantage, a 36 percentage point achievement gap in the English Language Arts persists between our Black African American students and their white peers. It's difficult to overstate the urgency of this problem. Reading is clearly and consistently correlated with overall literacy ability and academic success across all subjects. Children that are not meeting grade level reading standards are less likely to be able to solve mathematical word problems and achieve a grade level in science. Reading ability is associated with the likelihood of completing high school, and this relationship begins at an early age. One in six students who are struggling readers at age seven will not complete high school, and this is a dropout rate that is six times higher than that of proficient readers. Professional learning is a critical first step toward closing the reading gap early. And our plan provides compensation for teachers to engage in the course, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, or LETTERS, which is a program accredited by the International Dyslexia Association and provides educators and administrators with the knowledge to be literacy and language experts in the science of reading. Additionally, our plan includes a research-based foundational skills program, the systematic instruction and phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words, otherwise known as SIPs, to help struggling readers in grades K through 12, including emergent bilingual students and students identified with dyslexia. Our emergent bilingual students will benefit from high quality tier one instructions centered in a structured literacy approach, especially with an increase in instructional aids, to ensure opportunities to develop language and literacy skills. High quality instruction support also includes funding to provide equitable access to school libraries and culturally relevant materials that reflect students' identities and experiences. And finally, by investing in teacher professional learning, foundational skills curricula, instructional supports, and fully staffed and resourced libraries, we're prioritizing the literacy learning needs of our historically underserved students. This set of proposals is a, that you see on this slide, along with the others, is a first step in a dedicated mission to not only promote our students' academic achievement, but also their quality of life. Because early literacy predicts not only achievement in school, but access to quality employment, earning potential, and both mental and physical health outcomes. Matt Coleman.
Hi there. Those who hope to lead the implementation of MTSS must first begin by acknowledging that no one person will have the energy, expertise, and influence to lead a complex change process without first gaining the support of key staff members. As we have heard from Harkness and Elder Creek in the past, the site leadership team is vital, the backbone to MTSS implementation, as they help distribute the workload among members so that the leadership is shared. Teachers are empowered to make intentional decisions that affect their student and community population. Staff collectively create a guaranteed and viable curriculum, the grade level standards that represent the skills, content knowledge, and behaviors that every student must master to achieve, the learning standards that the school has deemed indispensable for future success. Teams ensure students have access to this essential grade level curriculum as part of their tier one, universal core instructional program. By investing in staff to meet and develop as site leadership teams, we are ensuring that this vital component of MTSS has resources allocated centrally to support sites district-wide. That in itself is not enough to support the structures and systems needed for a successful MTSS. Included in this investment is hiring eight MTSS coaches. MTS coaches will collaborate with site leadership teams to design and coordinate evidence-based, culturally responsive, tiered instruction and intervention strategies across academic, behavior, social-emotional learning, and attendance. Another essential component to a healthy multi-tiered system of support is valid and reliable data sources that provide staff access to academic data to efficiently and effectively identify students at risk, determine why students are at risk, monitor student academic growth, inform instructional intervention or planning, and determine mastery of grade level standards. An effective assessment tool identifies student strengths and weaknesses while supporting data-driven differentiated instruction. It provides valid and reliable growth data, helping staff track both current and long-term student progress and supports effective allocation of resources. I'm going to go ahead and pack this off to Ms. Mary Harden Young.
In moving on to our next slide on high quality instruction, I'm not sure that this needs a lot of introduction. We had a lot of public comment about one of our dual immersion programs earlier, our Mandarin immersion program at William Land. But the dual language immersion expansion proposal recommendation that you see here will provide financial support for both our, not only our Mandarin, but also our Spanish, our Mong, and our Cantonese dual language programs, to be able to expand those programs into middle school and through high school. This would provide the continuity in our programs that are much needed by our students, as you heard earlier tonight, who want to continue developing these critical second language skills. The additional funding that you see here would support the hiring of additional teachers, as well as strengthening curriculum and providing professional learning. And I'll pass it to Nancy.
Thank you. And as part of that, it's hard to resist. As part of that, we know that anytime we're talking about actually any of the areas that we are, it depends on people. It depends on us having, being able to have sustainable pools to implement these pieces. So this particular piece is an expanded substitute staffing. What we would like to do, we don't currently have right now, are pools of substitutes specifically for our dual immersion, specifically for our Waldorf, and specifically for our building subs, our buildings where it's more difficult to get subs, so like a building substitute. And that would require benefits. So you would have somebody, you would have a pool of identified subs, specifically for a school site, ready every single day. They know where they're going, they're fully benefited. That is part of the vision behind the expanded, expanded sub staffing. In addition to, in addition to that, I didn't do that, did I? Okay. Next slide, please. Sorry. In addition to that, we talk, we have been talking a lot about recruitment and retention. And one of the things that we haven't done enough of, and we are starting to, but really not heavily enough, is focus on retention. We're going to be coming back to you soon, to the board, to talk about exactly what we need around those areas. But right now, we don't even have a dedicated, ongoing funding source to be able to look at recruitment and retention. We just, a year ago, July, started to add staff focused on that, again, through grant funds. So what we want to be able to do within each of the very specific areas is identify recruitment and retention, heavily focusing on that retention component of staff, not just in our Hart to Fill, but in all areas to make these things possible. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Bob Lyons. Next slide, please.
Okay, this is our strategic priority group number five. So this is, basically, it's increasing efficiencies. And our first one on the list is updating our substitute and absent management system that will provide faster support for sites across the district. It also expands our absent reporting to all staff. Right now, it's only for site staff. And it also replaces our paper process with automatic workflows that benefits all staff with near real-time leave balances. Right now, they're, it's a paper process that's a month in arrears. It also will automate our human resource processes. It will speed up our onboarding process so new employees are ready to go their first day. It will speed up the separation process to ensure security of our systems and also facilities, and allows for less data entry with validated data. Moving to an online performance management system will provide for timely evaluations, and it will automate workflows that ensures the performance reviews are done in the correct process. It also improves employee retention and loyalty, and of course, it provides cost advantages through automation. Right now, we have about 75 different evaluation forms. So, and this online system will help organize all of that. Now I want to pass it off to our Assistant Superintendent, Mary Harden Young.
Next slide, please. In moving to our attendance and engagement area, we have a proposal that talks about providing transportation stipends for low-income families. We know that 39% of the students in our district attend a school other than their neighborhood school. This proposed funding would offer monthly transportation stipends to parents to assist in getting their child to a school that can support their unique needs and interests, and therefore eliminate a barrier for families in taking full advantage of our programs and our offerings. This example is modeled after other districts, Philadelphia for one, where qualified parents are able to apply for a monthly transportation stipend. Continuing in attendance and engagement, I'll pass this to Jennifer Kretschmann.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you again. Let me begin by saying, any investment in student attendance in time pays for itself and more. Through increased attendance rates, which means higher ADA, we get more funding from the state. The entire district gets more funding. As you saw a few weeks ago in our board presentation, the work of our care team, child welfare and attendance specialists, we support attendance at every level. We help sites with planning events, analyzing data, and most importantly, their MTSS attendance teams. We work side by side with clerks, techs, social workers, and parent advisors each and every day. We spend our summer doing outreach, knocking on doors, and building relationships, talking to families in an effort to get students back in class, to help remove the barriers that are keeping them away. That being said, we are currently funded through ESER, TIDAL, and grant monies. In collaboration with the FACE Department, we are in the process of applying once again for the LCSSP grant. It will be the third time. If we are awarded the $2 million for three years, 2023 through 27, the funding requested here may not be needed at all. And now, to continue talking about engagement, I'm turning it over to Chris.
Next slide, please. Athletics comes in an opportunity for our student athletes to be engaged in a community aspect. It's one of the multi-opportunities to support our students, not only during school, but after school. And we're seeking an investment into that long-term ability to compete with our neighboring school districts and providing equipment. I brought to you not too long ago, the opportunity where we provide equal access to our sports facilities in a bond program that will improve our outdoor athletic facilities of baseball facilities in a bond program that will improve our outdoor athletic facilities of baseball, softball, tennis. We're reimagining what our pools will be looking like and how they're being equipped. But they need to be maintained. And some of the equipment that is being sought here will help not only with a maintenance program that keeps our new fields with our brand-new, high-performing turf, real grass, not fake stuff, so that we're sustainable and we're water efficiency. We're also providing the same athletic fields that our student athletes could be expecting to see if they're promoted through into the college system. We're trying to remove the barriers for our coaches to have these student athletes participate in these sports activities by providing transportation, one of the biggest barriers in those sports activities, such as just getting to these practice facilities, and so in our case, not even having those practice facilities. Batting cages, hitting tunnels for baseball, having volleyball nets that actually work continuously, scoreboards that aren't constantly flickering on us, timing system that are available. Our coaches and families invest a lot of time and money, and we're trying to ask for that investment to be brought into the school system and that we provide that support so that our coaches are providing their support and full attention to our student athletes.
Next slide, please. Two weeks ago, the board surfaced questions about specific areas of investment that we did not include in that presentation because we have plans and funding sources for those areas. The next set of slides are to address those areas of inquiry that were brought forward by the board. The first of these is elementary sports, that many questions surfaced about two weeks ago. You see listed at the top of the slide the sports that are currently offered at our elementary sites, including stride offerings in the fall and the spring, along with flag football and basketball. Additional sports opportunities are offered through our expanded learning partnerships. Considerations for the future could be additional sports, but those would be based on the availability of facilities, as well as including some summer camps and clinics. To speak to the facilities piece just a bit, for us to have elementary basketball offered within our system, we use our middle school gyms, which are also used for our middle school sports activities. So we have some limited facility issues, so the additional sports would be based on facility availability. Next slide, pass it to Christina.
Good evening, President Rhodes and members of the board. There was a question about our investments in terms of CTE. So as you know, we are committed to ensuring that our students have a broad array of options post-high school. So we invested pretty heavily this last year using ESER funds in really ensuring that our students have access and are aware of college and career options. And we know it's very, you know, there's a lot of evidence that supports that we can't treat those two things in isolation, and the best approach is to integrate them. So for that reason, we have partnered with the Link Learning Alliance to really strengthen the quality of our pathways. So we, the Link Learning Pathway Model brings the rigorous academics with the practical application of career and has an integrated support model in it to expose our students. So the investment really comes in in a teaming model from a master scheduling perspective. So the CTE teacher, who oftentimes comes from industry, is teamed with a two, a minimum of two other academic teachers. And we've created through the master schedule space for those teachers to collaborate and create integrated projects. And we then are partnering with industry to ensure that our students, while they're taking the courses in high school, are then getting, you know, practical experience and internships and exposure to the workplace, so that by the time they exit our system, they have a better idea of what is required in terms of industry and experience. So we, this requires also professional learning, right, among our teachers. So this is not just the CTE teachers, but it's really bringing CTE with the content teachers to prepare our students. So thank you for your time.
Joining, oops, backwards. Joining me up here now is Danny Riletti, who is our Director for Culture and Climate and Social Emotional Learning. So we will go quickly through special education, and then he will share some updates on VAPA with you. Through ESER and other strategic funding shifts, we increased our cadre of vital special education positions, allowing us to more effectively address both compliance and student services. Those are investments that we have committed to fund when ESER supports expire. Additionally, supports for special education are embedded in our existing strategic investment proposals for professional learning, expanded instructional supports, structured literacy, and anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-responsive, and trauma-responsive practices. So you'll see here that while we did not have a specific special education investment proposal, they are included below in these four categories. For example, according to the California Dyslexia Guidelines, the most effective support for students with dyslexia is this early literacy instruction grounded in the science of reading that Dr. Pella shared with you earlier, as opposed to a referral to special education. Another example is that when our educators are well-versed in the principles of trauma-responsive practices, we learn to interpret student behavior as communication rather than problem behavior that requires disciplinary action and potential referrals of special education down the road. So investing in professional, in this professional learning package, which includes structured literacy, reflects our commitment to ensuring that all students, including our students with disabilities, are successful.
Good evening. So what this slide represents are the funding sources allocated to our anticipated district arts plan that you've heard before from our VAPA coordinator, CJ DeAngelis. So under ongoing funds, we have $7.5 million. This is a combination of $1 million from LCFF funding and anticipated 6.5 of Prop 28 money. The $1 million of the existing LCFF provides 4.6 FTE, funding for the music library, and minimal funding for community partnerships. Prop 28, which will be ongoing funding when we receive it from the state, we have yet, has yet to be determined yet when that will happen, will provide an estimated 6.5 million of ongoing funding for expanded staffing, as well as an additional 1.4 for various VAPA investments, including arts partnerships, instructional materials, and professional development. As a provision of Prop 28 funding, LEAs cannot reduce base VAPA LCFF funding. Under one-time funds, we have between 5.7 million and 9.1 million. So our current ESER funding is being used for expanded VAPA SCL arts partnerships. Technology and small amount of that goes towards expanded pandemic staffing. Items currently being used for ESER funds will be included in the Prop 28 budget. And then the last part of our one-time funds, as we, there is a grant, the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Grant. Through that grant, we are requesting from the state, well, within the district, when we receive the grant, 5.6 to 8.5 million dollars, the largest amount going towards being used to create VAPA labs or special classrooms at every elementary school that we are able to staff a VAPA teacher in. The last piece about Prop 28 and the Arts and Music Instructional Materials Grant, that those amounts have not been provided to us by the state yet, so those budgets will be submitted later with the arts plan. And I'll pass it on to Victoria Flores.
All right. And we know there are some questions also about mental health supports and emotional well-being. And so currently, we have a number of funding streams allocated that are supporting 92 Student Support Services staff that are providing direct services to students and families on our campuses. And that does include our current vacancies, and so that's about a $13.7 million investment that's already invested for next year as well. Eight of those staff serve our students and families experiencing homelessness across the whole district, and 10 of those staff serve our students residing in either foster care or families involved in the child welfare system. Over the last two years, we've hired 42 new staff, so that's really part of that expansion. And we're currently filling five vacancies. We made three offers yesterday. Cross your fingers for us. So we also have invested in CareSolus, which is, again, that navigation, as well as Cognito, suicide prevention awareness. It's kind of a choose-your-own-adventure online training that has incredibly high positive response rate. And I just want to call your attention to this yellow box really quick, to think about the power of when you invest in these kinds of staff out at our schools campuses. So to date, from August through the end of March, we have provided supports to nearly 30,000 students. That's almost, we're almost there, right, when we expand out to all of those sites? And they have provided over 170,000 tiered interventions, all the way from the highest, you know, crisis, all the way to teaching mindfulness in schools. So thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Ray Lozato, Director of School Safety.
Thank you. Good evening, President Rhodes, Superintendent, trustees. Am I doing this, or? All right, here we go. So, what a coincidence, when we're talking about well-being, you know, that also includes safety. We're making strides with the mental health overlap with, I mean, almost daily intersecting with our student-supporting services when crises occur on our campuses, as well as the opportunity to step into a process to interrupt school-prison pipeline. But, you know, I just want to point out that, you know, the gray areas is where we, traditionally is our warehouse, but we're making strides and trying not to walk past opportunities to tie all this together. And so... The current efforts that we have, you know, there was a lot of conversation, you know, based on some incidents that happened across our district over the last couple of weeks. We met with comprehensive high schools, as was mentioned earlier today, and, you know, there are some things that they're interested in or that they're kind of requesting that already, that were already efforts in progress. One of those is that we have embarked on a district-wide facility safety assessment, the things about cameras and fences and, you know, as it relates directly with safety, which is underway. We have finished our hiring of the two FTE at each comprehensive high school this week. We are waiting to hear back on offers to fill our team, to bring it to completion with the 10 lead campus supervisors, with the addition, you know, by backfilling six vacancies. We're continuing to work on providing training for Crisis Prevention Institute. June 19th, I think all of our principals will be participating in that training as well. And also the development and the revision of an emergency operations plan, which is a higher-level function, including our law enforcement partners, FBI, Office of Emergency Services, and of course, our local law enforcement. So there's a lot of good things going on, you know, that we have in motion, that I know that with the demands and the sentiment that comes across, you know, from this, from where I'm standing, you know, it seems like we're just never doing enough. And the truth is, we're not. When it comes to safety, we're going to continue to assess, we're going to, you know, kick out what's not working and be innovative about how to make, to bring safety to, to add safety across our district. So we looked at some immediate needs, and it's obvious that we need to be better at mitigating violence. The improvement of our ability to safely address student behavior just through ongoing training, maybe more intense training, you know, we really see that anything, any conflict or violence that happens for more than five minutes tends to get, you know, the energy turns into multiple fights, or it turns into situations, we got to lock our schools down. And so definitely looking at what's going on, not just here in, you know, in our county with other school districts, but nationally, you know, what we're doing or what is in place to try to mitigate anything be over five minutes or at least the response time of a law enforcement if they're needed. We have a strategy for weapons detection, which includes portable weapons detectors that could be part of a strategy from basketball games to proms to, you know, a bunch of different extracurricular activities where we can have staff monitoring, you know, for any signals of concern, and to be able to take a closer look to make sure that we're detecting any weapons or contraband from entering into our, into our spaces. We're in conversation, and it was kind of brought up with our principals, that we needed to centralize our safety equipment. We want to make sure that we are distributing equitably across the district, things like radios and, I mean, just basic resources that help improve communication and get us on to being more efficient and in a better position to address any crisis that might come. Bullhorns is another thing that came to mind in that conversation. How do we, just so we can be efficient with drills and be able to, you know, respond adequately. And so to centralize that from, at a district level and take that burden off the school sites, you know, is an opportunity that we're looking at, and that's the cost associated with just starting that process. You know, there's some policy considerations, and these don't have any, there's no dollar amount, but it's just things that I think, you know, we need to be ready to talk about that are opportunities for clear or no-student backpacks. These are just some of the things that are going, that some of our local districts are trying out. And of course, with a clear backpack, that's a cost associated with that. And all the way to no-student backpacks, was I think now our students have been accustomed to carrying a lot of stuff. But, you know, just being able to see what's realistic, what works in regard to that, just to reduce the chances that somebody might be bringing contraband, and not just, not just weapons, but even, you know, we have the problem with drugs being on campus as well. We have a large event policy. It's similar to what the State Fair adopted, and that is that any non-students to the district would require an adult, you know, to come with them to a district-hosted event, just to kind of, you know, increase the accountability when we have kids showing up. And just not having it a place where, you know, they're distracted, or there's somebody that they're accountable to beyond just our school, our school staff. So, talking about long-term goals, you know, I went to New York and had an opportunity to participate in a conference. It was called the Safety and Just Communities Conference at John Jay University, and it was phenomenal. And, you know, I was able to understand and ascertain from that conference, you know, one of the takeaways was that safety isn't just, what to say, safety isn't the absence of crime, but the presence of well-being. And, you know, we're going to stay true to what we started with the reimagining school safety. This was one of the components that we worked on. Developed this early on in, you know, in the conversation with reimagining school safety. Never really got it to where we're in a position to implement this as a district, but I've been working with Sierra Health Foundation, the probation department, and underneath the My Brothers Keeper Fellowship. And what, on May 30th, they're going to roll out this initiative with the three, oh, there's four overlapping goals. One is through partnership with law enforcement, school districts, and community partnerships, 100 young people from the juvenile justice system to this diversion process through an established pathway, which is what you see here. Implement a diversion pilot in Sacramento County communities and school districts to create opportunities for diversion whenever applicable, and to establish a consortium of MBK, My Brothers Keeper Sacramento Network, community-based organizations to support these restorative practices and contribute to the youth wraparound support model. And then also, this is where the commonality is kind of baked in to benefit our school district, is to interrupt the school-to-prison pipeline by developing school-based interventions with school districts. And so it's set up as a community mechanism, not only to where we could refer cases... And so, it's set up as a community mechanism, not only to where we could refer cases or situations to it as a school district, but also if our kids gets, if our students get cited, probation would also forward those citations to this mechanism. But even if our kids are getting cited outside of school hours, curfew or what, as an example, we still have a mechanism in place to give them every opportunity to learn from their decision-making, to make better decisions and it's basically based on this model. So, if we're going to plug into that, we will need a coordinator and that's the allocation for that one position. So, that's it.
Very quickly, we need to actually extend the meeting by at least, I'm thinking at least an hour. So, with that being said, motion, do we have a second to extend the meeting? Our meeting's, on the agenda says to end at about 10:11? It's necessary for the conversation. So, all in favor of extending the meeting? Raise your hand. Aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Please, by an hour.
Thank you. We're almost at the end of the presentation. Couple of slides left. These are just some other considerations that, for future considerations. The adoption of some additional instructional materials. And the reason these are listed as such is because they may not necessarily happen exactly on July 1 of 2024. Textbook adoptions take quite a bit of time in terms of research and identifying the materials and sometimes they happen in stages. So maybe a 12 million may be divided up over two years or made, and it may not be 50/50. But we just want you to be aware that these are two major purchases the district does need to factor in when considering future budgets. But it's, as of this moment, we do not want you to believe that you need to tie up resources right now, but they're just something to keep in your queue. And then I'm going to conclude with just reminding you about our budget process, that it is fluid, it's ongoing. Budget revisions are happening all the time as information becomes available. For example, grants that we become aware of, that we are funded for and the expenses that go along with them. In addition to that, there are prescribed dates that we bring the budget for you for consideration. In January, when the governor releases his proposed budget for the coming year, we share that information by way of an update and the actual data is included in second interim for the multi-years and that comes to you in March. And then the second one is the Governor's May revise, which we just got this last week and a half. And that information is used to inform our adopted budget that is coming before you shortly in the next couple of weeks. And then shortly thereafter, because it's not really common that there is a state enacted budget right around May revise, that doesn't have to happen until late June. So we see that happening in late June after districts adopt their budgets. So what happens with the state enacted budget, then we get that information right around late June, July. We update our budget, we bring that to you by way of the 45-day revise in August and let you know what the major impact is. And a lot of those details are still going to follow with trailer bills, cleanup language, and so all that will finally end up in our first interim, which comes June, December. But like I said, a district's budget is fluid and so we can bring revisions to you throughout the year. So you don't need to make decisions like hurry up for June adoption. You can make them as you go along, as you get more information. So just wanted to alert you to that. And that concludes our presentation. Now we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you so much, Rose. We're going to first ask, do we have any public comment on the topic?
We do. Nikki Malevsky and two other speakers have donated their time, so she has six minutes.
Okay. Ms. Malevsky, welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. Nikki Malevsky, First Vice President of SCTA. Last week, as a part of the negotiations process, we proposed a separate meeting to discuss in detail the district's budget to help streamline the bargaining process. Prior to Mr. Aguilar's tenure, tenure here, we did this frequently with the district staff and representatives and it really helped to share information and assumptions. Tonight's presentation, which is a remarkable document of misinformation, helps to explain why Mr. Aguilar is reluctant to hold such a meeting. This document is remarkable both for what it includes and what it leaves unsaid. On page five, the district includes an increase in operational costs and services of 18.4% with no explanation and no details as to how that number was arrived at. The step-in column costs for both certificated and classified does not take into account the significant turnover that we believe a closer examination will render moot as it has year after year recently in Sac City Unified. These are exactly the details that we will be raising with the district at our next bargaining session. On page six, the district provides a comparison of its unrestricted reserve funds compared to our surrounding districts. Despite repeated claims that the district is on the brink of insolvency, SUSD has a very healthy reserve fund, higher as both a percentage and as a dollar amount than Elk Grove, which is 1.5 times bigger than we are. More important is the omission that Sac City Unified's unrestricted reserve fund would have been $150 million or at 19.5% if Mr. Aguilar had not walked away from the table, thereby incurring a $47 million fine. On page seven, the district claims that only 12.2 million out of the 13.26 percentage COLA increase is available for investment. This statement is laughable on its face. The district's second interim budget for 2223 projects a $39 million surplus. With over 126 certificated vacancies, Sac City Unified is one of the, has one of the highest vacancy rates of any of the school districts in California. The number of classified vacancies is even higher. We appreciate that the supermajority of this board is taking on their roles as elected officials seriously and your willingness to direct the superintendent as you were elected to do. We further appreciate that this board has provided a vision that the district's vast resources should be spent on improving student learning conditions. Inadvertently, the inadequacy of this presentation, which once again was not made available to the public until late this afternoon, will serve to sharpen that discussion. At the back of the room, we've provided a one-page summary of the six steps we think necessary to make Sac City a destination district. One, recruit and retain quality educators that reflect the diversity of our students. Two, smaller class sizes. Three, multi-layered support for all students, including interventions. Four, community schools with shared leadership. Five, teacher-driven professional development. And six, manageable caseloads with fully staffed aid positions and special ed. We are fortunate that our reopeners gives us the opportunity to start implementing each of those six steps immediately. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Malevsky. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Board discussion, Rose, if you can come back up or whoever wants to come back up. We have a big group. If, if you would like to discuss anything, please hop in the queue and I will call on Okay. Member Phillips.
I appreciate the disaggregated data. I'm going all the way to the educational part, but if we're talking about budget, we're also put in a position where we need to be looking at... Are you confused? Are you guys listening? Okay. Since our problem seems to be, I guess, the, the lack of the, and I'm sorry. Yeah. Well, maybe I need, okay, so wait, we're still on the budget budget, right? This is why I say I don't want to stay past 10:30. So, we're going to stick with you, Rose. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to try and translate this into plain English. And I know I've said this a couple of times and I have to say it in a way that I can understand. So, sometimes it's confusing when I hear information that doesn't quite make, make sense to me about how much money we have versus how much money we don't have. So, I don't know. Maybe I'm not the person who should be speaking first. I think my, my, my only question is, I don't want to say we're broke as a district because I don't think we're broke as a district. I think that we have to, and I, maybe I'm just sharing this with my, my colleagues, is that we need to be aware of things that we're, we're trying to decide we want to spend on our students and be very specific about who the students are that I think actually really should matter without ignoring the other students. I think that's where I was going. So, regardless of how much money we have and how much we talk about what we're going to spend, where we're going to spend it, who we're going to spend it on, I think we keep ignoring what's more important is that we need to focus on those that we can uplift and bring everybody with them. And those are our Black students because they fall into our categories of unhoused and they fall into our categories of foster care and they fall into our categories of special education services students. So, so maybe I'm just setting the, and I'll come back in and say something later, but maybe I'm just kind of setting the, the framework here is that as we talk about this, whatever we're talking about tonight, I really want to remember that our biggest failure is to our African-American students. Whatever we do and whatever changes or whatever we talk about and deliberate about, it has everything to do with uplifting the least and that least is who we have a lot of difficulty talking about. So, I think I'm just, maybe that's just another social worker's prayer, that we pay attention to the fact that there are some folks who are not mentioned in here as often as I would like to see. So while we're talking about this, I really want you guys to remember who is the least served. And I know that there are other populations, but I just want us to remember as we're talking about these things to focus on those students. So, maybe that's my message from the African-American advisory board.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Member Kayata.
So, when I'm looking at this budget, I'm thinking about the conversations I have with all the members of our community. It wasn't six months ago that I was knocking on doors, trying to hear directly from people what they want out of our district. I heard two things. One was improving our schools in the way that is proposed in this presentation. These investments are critical to having a solid school district for our kids and our community. The other thing I heard was a desire to strongly invest in our educators and other staffs. So we can do both of those things. As I'm looking, I've been through this a few times now because as we said last time, we can't afford all this. So, even if we did it all, maybe we do a percentage of each one. I'm trying to think of the items that are most important to me, but my needs are not everyone's needs and my family's needs are not necessarily representative of our entire student body. Well, I know they're not. We're higher income, white and Asian family. I mean, this is not the demographics of our district. I think my biggest takeaway when I looked through this is this should not be a conversation that just occurs here in the Serna Center. This should be a conversation that we have with our labor partners. The example earlier this evening of the parent-teacher home visits, that's not something that I would have ever thought of. That's not something that administrators by themselves would have thought of and it's probably not even something that a teacher would have thought of themselves. It was a bunch of people all coming together and working to address these things. So, I will leave a few things that I think do need to be focused on, but ultimately I think prioritizing them and making these changes that we need to do, it needs to involve labor because other than a few one-offs, you know, like the one-up and walls we did last year, well, I wasn't there yet, but, you know, there are some things that, sure, the board, it's in their purview, but most of it, we're not doing the day-to-day work here. And I really, really think we need to include labor in these conversations. The few things that I think we really just need to make sure, this is from my perspective, but again, in mind of the comments I just made, is I've heard a lot of desire to improve professional learning among our educators and that's coming from the educators themselves and from community. Having a pool of substitutes, definitely we need that and also the ability to recruit subs and other teachers. Safety, Ray went into, I think we're well-covered, but just, we know we're not doing enough, as he said, we need to, even if that's putting it as part of this budget conversation for us to vote on rather than issues we've already discussed. Health, mentioned that earlier. Visual and performing arts, really lean into the Prop 28 money, bring back anything that we can do that's a one-time investment. But in terms of long-term investments, again, working with our communities, working with, you know, neighborhood partners, arts groups, NorCal School for the Arts, I forget the exact name, but they have just done amazing things in our district. Continue those community partnerships. And finally, we need to uplift our successes. We need to identify what things we're doing right and double down on them. That's things like our dual immersion, that's things like improving our athletic programs. We need to focus on all this and I think ultimately my biggest takeaway is I'm prepared, you know, before the end of this fiscal year, to identify some one-time funds that we need to get going so that we can have them rolling out next year. But in terms of ongoing funds, I mean, big buckets, sure, but in terms of specific investments, I really need to hear from our entire community, working in collaboration to decide what we're going to do, what we can commit to doing and what is going to be a long-term investment for our district, not just something that we get done over the next two to three years.
Thank you, Member Kayata. Members?
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. That was a lot of slides and I know that takes a lot of work, so thank you. I kind of want to, I think, Member Phillips and Member Kayata touched on some of these things, but I want to actually dive into or just talk about that commitment to our Black and African-American students because when I look at the gap that would exist hypothetically if we were to somehow get 96% attendance, no suspensions, no one socioeconomically disadvantaged, I understand the gap would exist and I think it's important to acknowledge that that gap exists because we have as the, since, gosh, how many years? Three to five, 400, 500 years of racism and slavery and everything else that comes with the reality of living in this country as a, as a Black person, as an African-American, also as a, as a minority in general, that those are gaps that, that specific gap between our Black and white students is going to, no amount of money that we can throw at it today is going to fix that gap. But what I do see is that if somehow those things were taken away, we'd see a rise from 19% to 42%. And if our, if our Black children were sitting at 42%, we would be having a slightly different conversation today. So, I do want to know what that investment would look like to actually address some of the issues around homelessness, supporting our children who are in the foster care system. How do we actually address truancy? I know that I'm personally committed to making sure that issues like suspension, expulsion are being looked at more seriously. I really appreciate that Ray presented what looks like a couple of ideas on intervention, but I know those, those levels of intervention are not taking place right now, right? That's why we have suspension, expulsions coming to us because maybe we haven't exhausted all those opportunities and to really connect with those students. So, yeah, I would love to see that percentage jump. I don't think we're going to, I don't want to live in a hypothetical world where there's 96% attendance and no suspensions ever and no one socioeconomically disadvantaged, but those are the areas that need the most support. So what can we as a district do to actually start fixing the situation with our homeless students and foster care students because those students are the most disadvantaged as Gracie mentioned, when you include race, that's where the numbers plummet exponentially. So, I would just love to know what else we're thinking about as a district to support students. I know that I've been following what's happening in Oakland Unified and I know that's been a huge issue for them. They've been trying to figure out how to house children. How do you house kids? How do you house families that have no roof over their head? Never going to get, get a kid getting As if they don't have a roof over their head, right? I've mentioned this before. So, just some thoughts. Separately, I also agree that these- Separately, I also agree that these are great ideas, and I would just love for us to find the space to collaborate with our labor partners. And I also want to use the word "community." Oftentimes, we say "community," we just talk about parents or we talk about students, but our teachers, our certificated staff, they are, they live here, their children go to these schools. We need to have that buy in from everyone. And I just want to know what we're supposed to do to help you all bridge that gap and kind of start something new, start something fresh. I know that Nikki came up earlier and talked about back in 2017 or before that, that we used to actually hold those budget conversations. I encourage us to hold that conversation. I think oftentimes when we have presentations, people are like, do we really have this funding? Are there misconceptions around it? Well, I think you do a great job explaining the funding, Rose, and if there's misconceptions, then maybe we should have a conversation to address those misconceptions with everyone. And if we can do that, and if we can reach this place where we have a better understanding of the funding, I think that we can move in the right direction. So those are my thoughts for now, probably have more later, but just thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Member Singh. Do we have anyone else in the queue? Member Jean.
Thank you. So I'm looking at our Slide 7 at the Budget Development, the 13.26 COLA. And just to clarify, COLA last year was actually 656, and then there was an additional 67 of LCFF investment, right?
That's correct.
Okay. We've just combined it and called it COLA for simplicity?
Yes.
Okay. I know we've got a declining enrollment problem. When enrollment declines and we're not getting those monies, do expenditures also decline?
Not necessarily. I mean, some of them do, but our kids don't necessarily decline in, you know, perfect packages. So we can't say that with that is going to come the equivalent of teachers, but we do try to, of course, we do plan for the reduction. But pretty much, the students are spread out throughout the district where the decline is happening. So you're still going to have the same operating costs as far as utility bills are concerned and some of the supplies. You see a small decline when it comes to staffing, but not significant.
It's not one for one.
It's not a one for one, no.
I'm curious as to why we have a 3.7 million STIRS rate increase when the 19.1 is stagnant all three years.
Yeah, that's because of our increase in, in our staffing over the last few years in some of the categories. And we also did see some increases in our salaries, and so it, it moves in same coordination with that.
And can you explain RRM again?
Yes, that's the Routine Restricted Maintenance Account, and that goes to pay for the upkeep of all of our, our school site facilities, not necessarily like modernization or new construction, but it's supposed to just take care of those things like addressing flooring, painting, electrical, so that the lifespan of that building is what it should be. Otherwise, if we ignore that, then we decrease the lifespan. And it does include also some staff costs in there. It is restricted because you can't use it to say, let's pay for a janitorial. It has to be for actual repair, renovation, or replacement of some equipment or a site, yeah, facility.
So it's the old Stitch and Time Saves Nine idea?
Yeah, and it's, and it's 3% of our unrestricted, of our, of our operating budget. So, yep. And it changes twice a year. We have one rate at adopted budget, of course, it's adopted, it's projected, and then at the end of the year when we close the books, we, we true up that, that number.
Right. I think my, thank you for all of that. I really just wanted to understand those monies. My very large, large question for all of this is how were stakeholders engaged as we gathered these needs and cost out these expenses to meet those needs?
I'll mention, Member Jean, these are recommendations that we're bringing to you as a staff based on the work that they are tasked with doing. Many of our staff members here at Serna have been teachers, of course, came out of the classroom. Many of the leaders that are doing this work around professional development are working directly with teachers. So all of those things are taken into consideration. And really, this is our best proposal based on the expertise that we have in, in, in our district. I look to people like Mr. Ralston, for example, who has a great deal of experience managing athletic fields, things like that, Assistant Superintendent Erin Hansen, and her vast experience. I mean, just really, everybody that's sitting here at the front of the room has an extensive amount of experience, and this is our, our proposal to you for the board to deliberate, give us some direction, and then adopt the budget. So that, that's, that's my response.
So we didn't discuss anything with students or parents, community members, school site leaders, classified folks or teachers?
Our staff work with site leaders all the time, and we have principals meeting, we just had one last week, for example, that was focused on anti racism, anti bias work. So I would say that we do, we do spend a lot of time working with our, with our, with our colleagues, and, and that's where this all comes from. I can look at everybody that's seated here, seated here in the front, and everybody is very well regarded and very, very well respected for, for the work that they do here on behalf of our staff and our students.
How do we prioritize these? Or is that our responsibility as a board?
That's a good question. What we presented today is a little bit different than what we presented last week. Our proposal is, and you can see this, is very heavily focused on high quality instruction. A lot of investments that we are proposing would go into continued professional development, professional learning opportunities. It's probably about $20 million just in that work alone. And then other areas that we have focused on are all prioritized based on our five strategic priority areas. So this is our best thinking, and it varies in terms of the investment levels for what we think is going to be critical for us to actualize each of those five strategic priority areas.
What is our evaluation process to ensure that if we do these investments, we'll get the return we're looking for?
Well, I would love to be able to say that we could come back to you on a regular basis with district wide data about the progress of students toward reaching grade proficiency. We cannot at this point. There is a wide variation in the level of access that students have. And to demonstrate that they are moving toward grade level proficiency, so we, of course, do have common formative assessments in the system, they're just not used district wide. Ultimately, the board will have to deliberate amongst, amongst yourselves to decide, for example, if it's worth investing up to, up to $20 million without the ability to come back as a, as a team and say to you, here's what we're seeing district wide among all of our third graders, or all of our fifth graders, or all of our sixth graders, all of our seventh graders. So it's a very, very fair question and one that has very, very big policy implications. Do you look, do you want to invest that level of resources and, and us provide you a wide varying level of, of that type of information?
As we were going through this, it looks like some of this is definitely on personnel because it's all about the people, right? The people that do that work with the kiddos. We also had things, specific programs that were mentioned. Have we gone through any kind of piloting process? Have we worked with staff to know that these programs will be truly meeting the needs of the students and of the staff that are working with the kiddos on these levels? I mean, one example would be on Page 19 in the letters program. Some other things were talked about in terms of the, the library, staffing. There was a bit of that with MTSS. You mentioned it in the technology in terms of evaluations and HR processes. So have we, what was the process for determining these were the programs that are truly going to meet our needs?
Yep.
So, hi, thanks for that question. Hi. I'm going to answer that question specific to the letters and the SIPs, the Structured Literacy Program. Right now, we have four schools that have purchased the letters program themselves, and they're in the first year. Several of our schools, so Setterville, for example, has their entire staff engaged in letters. They are really happy with it. I talked to the principal the other day, and they're really excited about it. Our coaches here at Serna will be supporting them for year two next year. David Lubin teachers, David Lubin has also purchased SIP, I'm sorry, letters, and their teachers are engaging. In addition to Father Keith B. Kenny, and I, and I spoke to Principal Alexander the other day, who is a letters graduate herself, it's not really a, that's not really a thing, but she's a huge proponent of letters. And I was speaking with her the other day, she's really excited about how that's working out at Father Keith B. Kenny. And then John Bidwell as well. So we do have four schools right now that are piloting letters. We also have schools that are piloting SIPs, and those schools have all paid for it themselves. We've done some district wide PL around SIPs, but we just have a consistent request for more and more and more. So the 6.2 million that we have for structured literacy, that could potentially cover about five cohorts, which would be about 200 teachers. And I won't take too much longer, but just let me know if you have any other questions about that. But that one has absolutely been piloted.
Are, are we sure that it'll meet the needs of all students as opposed to just the ones targeted in certain school areas? Meaning, I've seen it too often where something very much succeeds for one population, another population tries it and it doesn't always succeed. Hence, the beauty of community schools, where the schools themselves are building these, and sometimes the attempt to, you know, huge approach doesn't always meet those needs. So are we feeling like this program is going to meet the needs of all kiddos?
Yes. That's my short answer, yes. And I would stake my career on it. Our teachers need to learn how to teach kids to read. It is a very difficult thing to understand. I think we underestimate that. All of the research shows that we underestimate it. It's, you know, our brains are not wired to learn how to read. They're wired to learn language. And the, the learning how to teach foundational skills and develop a structured literacy approach is going to be an investment in our teachers' knowledge base so that they will learn, understand how to teach reading, and then having the SIPs materials will give them an opportunity to operationalize that. So absolutely, yes. Knowing how to teach reading and having the materials to do it will make a difference.
Yeah, I, I teach high school juniors and seniors, and if, if they can't read in third grade, I can't do much for them when they get to me.
Yes, I think we're all here because we want kids to read. So thank you for asking me that.
Thank you. I won't go even deeper because it's way too late for that, but I guess my bottom line question is, can we afford all of this?
No. No, we cannot. And we'd be happy to come back and bring you, again, our best projections for a multi year calculation of what the entire, the entirety of all of our proposals would cost.
And?
And the impact, sorry, Member Jean, the impact it would have.
The impacts.
Yeah.
And when it comes to establishing those priorities, is that the work of the board?
Well, it's been my experience, and I don't have a lot of it here, because as I said the last board meeting, this is the first time in my role as superintendent that I've brought this level of proposed investments to the board. So we're kind of new at this, both you and me. But based on governance standards, it is the deliberations that you have looking to your side and asking clarifying questions, the kind that you've just asked, that we then take back and say, what did we hear from our board as being some of the most important priorities that they would like to see?
Okay. Thank you. I think that concludes my questions.
Okay, thank you. Member Phillips?
I think I got it now. So I, I really wanted to talk to my colleagues about one particular item that I am struggling with, and it is the, the immersion, the language immersion program. And the reason why I'm struggling with this is that I decided to go online today, do a little research from a parent who maybe can't do that readily. And I found some information that had me thinking that maybe our support of expanding the Mandarin immersion program might be problematic. Now, I know it's a beautiful program. I know that it encourages, you know, families to come here to our district, but I, I, I feel that there is a difference, and maybe someone can explain to me the difference between our, our language immersion program and our dual immersion program? There's a difference between the two? Because, and, and the reason I say this is I, I looked at our Spanish dual, they got a bunch of different names, but our Spanish dual language programs. Susan B. Anthony, Bowling Green, Ethel Phillips, Cida Chavez, and Edward Kimball. Those programs take native speakers and bring them up in proficiency to English. And so you start in the beginning in your native language, 1090. I think that's what I got. And so we, we work our way to where our children are by grade four, doing 50/50. And then we have a conversational Spanish, but we also have MONG that does the same thing. I think that those are very valuable programs in terms of making sure that we're increasing the proficiency for our foreign language speaking students. What I am struggling with is the push for the Mandarin immersion program, because this is completely opposite, where we have English speaking children who come in at 80, 20, kindergarten through first, and we build them up from English to mostly Mandarin. I think it, I showed somewhere that Cantonese came in, in one program, and then another one, I guess there's a difference between Elder Creek and, and William Land. So I'm having trouble supporting, even with the parent, you know, with the parent push for giving their children this program, which is absolutely fabulous, without giving our, our other students the opportunity to participate in this. Because I did a little check in, and I'm hoping I'm right about this. If you come in in kindergarten in our Mandarin immersion program, you're fine. However, if we're going to keep it at William Land, which is where we're going to keep it, and we have a parent who says, someone out, out in, you know, maybe a parent from Keith B. Kenny, says, I want my child to participate in this program, willing to make the sacrifices, get on the bus, do what I got to do to get my kid over here, they can figure that out by second grade, that second grader for Keith B. Kenny won't even be able to get into the program because they have to test in. And I think somewhere California's got it written that we have to test into that program. So what I'm struggling with is while it's a fantastic program, I have a really big problem with continuing it in areas where it's beneficial. And probably what got to me the most was, you know, on our district website, it says specifically, give your child a competitive edge in the global economy by enrolling them in this program. We have children who would most likely not even be able to learn how to speak a foreign language because they're still struggling with their own, which is English. And so I'm kind of sideways about wanting to, to support expansion of a program that excludes children that not only can't learn in English, but wouldn't even be able to test in if their parents found the ability for them to get there. Now, mind you, there's, you can go, you can go a little different and say, well, maybe we're going to expand into one of our least served areas, right? So take that middle school program, put them in one of the places where maybe the other parents have to. We know they're not going to have the opportunity to get transportation, bus transportation, but, you know, I've been asked to not use a couple of words by people I know. So, you know, my concerns are like, you know, we're talking about this evening, you know, AP courses and testing and getting great scores and getting into college and, you know, I, I'm just really concerned that our black students are, are not, not even a part of that. And I, I want to make sure that we kind of all understand what the importance is in that immersion program, even though it's fabulous, it's letting a bunch of people out, and those are the ones we're not doing our jobs for.
That's very fair, Member Phillips, and that's exactly the kind of deliberation that we're looking for, just high level. What we're talking about here is simply making sure that students who What we're talking about here is simply making sure that students who are in those programs are interested in pursuing those programs, not just one program, but all of our programs. I was at Susan B. Anthony, I think, on Monday morning and I was able to see, just remind myself of the value of kinder students and first grade students learning how to speak and master two languages. We're not talking about here, and you wouldn't be approving or asking us to advance specific locations for the expansion of those programs. That would be something we would come back to the board. Certainly, I was asking those questions of our principal at Susan B. Anthony. Where do students attend? And what happens in the case of Susan B. Anthony students, though, is whether they go to John Still, or some of them go to SES, or any other school, they stop learning the language. They stop being in that space of, 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 of working toward mastery of two languages. So what we're talking about here is just to make sure that there is a K through 12th grade pathway for students to continue in these programs. And so we're not asking you to, we're not bringing forward as part of this proposal the middle school or the high school where those, where those programs would continue. Those are things that we would come back after doing some additional work.
But the pathway, obviously, we'd not be investigating whether or not we're gonna go, where we're gonna put that program until we decide that we're going to expand it or that we're gonna possibly fund the expansion.
The expansion that we're funding would be to make sure that it doesn't stop at sixth grade, that it continues in middle school and in high school. That's really the expansion.
Right. And I think my biggest struggle is, I mean, you know, I can talk about Area 7 all day. We don't have a middle school. We don't have a high school. So, I mean, what kind of pathway are we, are we providing for, for any child in my area?
Yeah. And certainly, that's, that's a complicated issue. I would point to other aspects of our budget proposals. And I'm sure that, you know, there's pros and cons. But we would want to make sure that students that are interested could also have access to attend some of those programs. Sac City, on the one hand, is, is very rich in the number of offerings, as you know, across the entire district, small, medium, comprehensive high schools and such. So I can see your point. We're not talking about starting new dual immersion programs in this proposal, but that certainly is something that we would want to listen to if that is direction that you'd like to have us come back and say, what would it look like to start a new dual immersion program? And where might we be, where might you be interested in us studying that further?
And what I would probably be thinking is not necessarily creating new, but relocating old. For, I mean, like I said, for the most part, I really want to hear from my colleagues on this because I know some of you guys might be really excited about it. Even though I'm excited, I just, I really want to hear what you guys have to say about, you know, this hot topic item.
Okay, thank you. Member Singh?
So I have a different topic. I don't know if anyone's gonna respond. I mean, I will get back to you at some point. I have a question around slide 19, which is still here. So the increased support for emergent bilingual students, is that, are those the English learner students from slide, from our ELA SBAC stuff? Or is that, this is different?
Yes, are you asking about the term emergent bilingual?
Yes.
Yes. So that term was actually coined by an author named Ophelia Garcia because the term emergent bilingual speaks more to the goal of biliteracy and bilingualism as opposed to a more deficit lens, which is, you know, sort of embedded in the term English learner. So when you think of a learner, it's somebody who might be missing something. Emergent bilingual is, somebody is becoming bilingual, biliterate. So it's just another word that, or phrase that's used to describe what we think of as English learners.
Okay.
So sorry for the lecture, but I just wanted to, it is, it is a really important distinction. And I just wanted to explain that it does live in the research literature. We didn't just make it up.
No, I didn't, I didn't think it's made up. It's just, I need things to, I'm trying to align them with the data, right? So we don't
Then whenever you see emergent bilingual, it's English learner.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So on that topic, emergent bilingual slash English learners. I think my question is, we are talking about increasing support for English learners. And when we look at the ELA SBAC data, English learners, the deficiency is still not as high as the deficiency that we see for homeless youth, foster youth, and again, we've been talking about it, African-American youth. So my question is, the Black Parallel School Board was here earlier and they specifically asked for instructional aids to support their students. How is our data informing the decision to spend $3.6 million to increase support for English learners? When I'm seeing that there's other groups that are as deficient, if not more deficient? And could that funding be used towards also supporting those groups as well? And not just the English learner groups? Or how do we come to that conclusion?
The answer is yes. Again, that is exactly the kind of information that we want to hear from the board. We can come back and say, you know, that could be a $5 million investment. I don't remember the calculation for the 3.6 million. How many instructional aids that, that, that reflects? Does anybody on our team, because I know there was a calculation that was made? So we can get back to you, Member Singh and board members. But we could take that calculation, quantify the number of instructional aids, and apply it to any number of schools and, 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 and in the case of emergent bilingual students, in some cases, they are, as you know, in the same classroom. They are working with the same teacher. But I think what you're referring to is just an expansion of instructional aids overall to serve the needs of, of our students. But in particular, with a focus on our black African-American students.
Yeah, no, so I completely get that. I think what I'm trying to say is that I just want to know how, how we get to this, right? So if, if my job, and you all are a staff, and we're just doing governance oversight stuff here, I'm just trying to follow the data. Like, when I read the data, I see the discrepancies. And we're constantly being presented the data that showcases black and African-American students who are consistently falling behind. And I'm not seeing anything specific to that in our ideas, but I do see something specific to emergent bilingual. I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just wondering if you've thought about that, if that's a thought that's crossed your mind. Maybe that's one way of closing that gap, right? So I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm not saying allocate more funds. I'm not saying allocate less funds. I'm just saying, if I see this, that's, I'm gonna read it. Like, what drove us to say, this is what the group we're gonna support? And we're gonna spend this much money on them? So that's that. And then I think this would be for Victoria, slide 32, which is emotional well-being again. So when we pooled SROs from our campus, we talked about investing into our student well-being, mental health services and other things. So when I read this, am I seeing that promise of increased funding? We talked about taking funding that was being used for SROs and using it directly to support our students when it came to mental health and other things. Has that been done? And if not, what funding do we, does, does your group need or folks need in order to actually make good on those promises that we made to the community?
Yeah, I think that this funding has exceeded what was allocated for SROs. Is that correct, Superintendent? Yeah. And so, yes, we have far exceeded, you know, luckily with these additional ESAR funds. The only thing that's held us back from having staff at every single school is workforce, right? Development, like, there's, just has to be the, the people there to hire. So that's probably been our biggest struggle. And this is the year that we expect to be fully staffed. And so every single school campus will have at least one day a week. And geographically located, so if someone's very close by, all the way to full-time staff every day at our highest need schools. And we make those staffing allocations based on student need.
So how far are we, if we wanted to? What would it look like to actually have a social worker at each school site? At least one, full-time?
Full-time, so you would, you would, you would need one staff per, you know, every school, so 76.
And how many do we have right now?
So we've got 92 right now. Some are in program, right? So you see that some are supporting homeless students, so they have a specialty across the whole district, right? Some are, 10 of them are supporting our foster youth, you know, families as well, covering the whole district, partly because those students tend to move schools a lot. And we want them to have that connection to one safe and caring person that will follow them, right? So that you're, every time, you're having to break or build that relationship. And so that was the ethic, you know, that we, that we chose. So I'd probably, I'd want to get back to you, maybe like with a BC, to give you the absolute right numbers. You know, but I think one thing for us to also consider, though, is that equity question, right? You know, or do we give everyone the same, so everyone just gets one? Or do we really give schools with the highest needs maybe even more?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm thinking, where do we start, right? And I know there's schools in my area that some have, have more access than others, right? So when I look at 92, and we're saying eight are working with families experiencing homelessness and 10 are working in the foster care. If I do my math, we're at 82, so 74. So we have 72. So how are the 74 allocated? So if we have 72 school sites, how are those 74 folks allocated? How many of them are at the central location? And then, you know, do you have that number? And I'm not saying you have to have it off the top of your head, but just an idea.
I can definitely get back to you, but, you know, some schools do have more staff because they have that higher need. So our comprehensive schools have two staff, right? Because you're talking about 1,600, you know, students versus 250 students. And so that's the way that we've done that staffing, using that, you know, equity and of data-driven decision-making. And so that's why, you know, you're seeing, and that 92, though, does include our vacancies. So I was giving you like the total number, right? That, that, that's, that's our goal, right? That we're continuing to staff up. We're not quite there yet. We still have those eight vacancies that we listed there.
Okay, perfect. Are you able to provide the breakdown for the schools? Can you get that to me? I just, I really, I just want to say this. I think we had a student speak today from Rosemont High School who came up and talked about this. You know, we, I really feel like we need to be responsive to what kids want and what kids need. And I think the idea of safety is what, what's most important, right? You have to actually feel safe, right? All these other conversations about reactive measures and other things, I just don't think have the same impact as the feeling of feeling safe, having like real conversations, having someone to talk to. So I, I really want to figure out how we can actually get social workers and, you know, folks who have mental health backgrounds at each of our school sites. Just at least one.
And Rosemont's a great example because they're a school that did not have anything before this expansion. Last year, we were able to staff a highly skilled, you know, a school social worker there who's been in our district, actually serving in that east side of the, the district for many years. So very familiar. And then we were able to hire another individual. So they have two full-time staff out there that really are running a student support center. But this is new to Rosemont, right? So there's also sort of that getting integrated and, and your students knowing what's out there for them. So I know they've been working really hard. We'd be happy to get that to you, maybe in a, in a BC. So that you could know exactly what's where and what we're staffing for next year. We do have social workers already on contract who are coming to us next year. And one of the gifts that we have is a really robust internship program with our local universities. And so I'm happy to say we've hired a number of those interns.
Nice. And can I also ask about, I think as a JFK student who talked about the EQ program, would that fall into this mental health space?
You know, I don't think it did before. I think it kind of fell, I think maybe some of the, the teachers are admin, but it could, absolutely. And so we do also have two staff out at Kennedy and then a third, a vacancy for a youth and family mental health advocate. So I'm happy to talk to the team about, so, I know, I think they supported that work. But, you know, this is what happens sometimes when someone who lifted that up and then moves on and who picks it up. And so, yes, that is the space, though, that, you know, our staff really want to be in.
Yeah, if you could add that, if you get the information on the EQ program, I think it was really interesting to hear that. And just, those students seem to be very positively affected by it. And it's like, oh, I didn't even know that existed and now it's gone. So that'd be helpful.
Yeah, and a really strong, you know, peer mentorship, such a strong model. So absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My only other comment is around sports. I just want to say that I support sports funding and want to make sure kids have access to athletics. So I do want to put that out there.
Thank you. Member Jean?
Okay. Thank you all for being here at Soul 11119. So I'm going to keep this short. I just have a few comments. I know this is obviously a very robust program put together. I mean, I can't even imagine the work that went into this. But I wanted to go into, these aren't questions, these are just comments that I'm going to make. All of this information that we're talking about here is not something new that was just pulled out of a hat. We've listened to community. We have the LCAP goal. We have site visits. How many emails have we received, public comments? We've listened to our parents. We've listened to students. For the past two and a half years that I feel that I've sat at this seat, all of the things that have been asked of us are in this document. While we can't do everything, but we've been asked to be a desired district, to have top talent, to have solid community partners, safe, safety for our students, family support, visual performing arts, social emotional learning, community programs, literacy gap that we need to fix, the achievement gap. This is addressing all of those things to me when I look at this. And I wasn't here at the last meeting, so this is my first conversation with everybody about this. But from what I see, this is going to be really hard. And a very critical lens is going to be, have to use to determine what is going to be our priorities moving forward. But what a good problem to have because all of these things are going to take care of so many things for our students and our families. I'm really tired, so I'm not going to say a lot more than that. I don't have a lot of questions at that point, this point. But if I do, I know who to reach out to, to get those questions answered. Rose, I just want to say thank you very much for breaking down the budget because I know a lot of people have had a lot of questions about that and it seems very confusing. It is very confusing. I appreciate slide six, where you actually indicate where we are versus other districts and where we are in negotiations. So we still have work to do. So that's a really important factor to look into, what are any balances right now? Again, thank you all for being here, doing the work. I know your hearts and minds are in it. So that's where we all have to be continuing, moving forward together. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Moving to Member Jean.
I just wanted to respond to Gracie's question, to all of us, about the dual language. Anytime you have a specialty program, you risk keeping the population up enough to sustain the expenses of that program. And so my concern is if we invest $5 million now, but the students don't stay in it, then we have to make the really tough cut at some point. And there's a few students that are still in it, and they really want it, but there's not enough to sustain the program, et cetera. And then it starts becoming, in direct response to yours, we're funding, we're funding based on certain needs while not addressing really big other needs that we need to address, particularly in the lens of equity and in the lens of our, our black and brown students and our Native American students and our whatnot. And so to me, the question of priorities is really huge because I think, as I heard everything, I would love to have all the money to spend on most of these things. I also think we need to have some hard conversations about the needs of our district and where we need to prioritize our resources. So I just really appreciate your voice and your perspective. And thank you for asking us to consider that tough one because I've received the emails and I saw the joy. And I know the kids and the parents are invested in these programs. It's also a big conversation and a big decision for us to make.
So I
So I, yes, I, okay, so, yes, Tara, I, it, and I think what it's doing is again, driving me back to our problem of practice where we have failed to define, period. If we're talking about implementing and having everything that we need that's going to work, the one thing that we have not done specifically, or maybe that we all don't understand, is that true definition of why there's that gap? That isn't explained by anything other than possibly the fact that there's a difference between the color of the skin of these students. If we're not talking about racism in our educational settings, then we can't implement anything, because it tends to be colored. That's an interesting word to use, but it tends to be colored by, by our, our, our individual experiences. And so, you know, frequently I talk, I'm, I'm the only black woman up here talking about this. Usually, you know, my community doesn't speak as loudly, because they may not have the ability to, to get on the email and coordinate and do all that. So, you know, our, our problem of practice is really that, I mean, we as a district, we need to, you know, be very vocal and very honest and painfully transparent about the system that we're working in. And I, I know it's hard sometimes to get folks to understand that. But, you know, we, I think we really just need to get comfortable with talking about what it is that causes that gap. And, and we could be wrong and whatever studies come into play that make it sound, you know, like maybe it's something different. I'd like to see them try to prove it. I don't think that that's the case. But I, I mean, I appreciate you, you chiming in. I also want to say to my colleagues that for our staff here, and maybe, you know, superintendent can correct me, or maybe council can correct me. We're kind of the show right now, because our job is to kind of talk about what we, what we think. I'm not a hundred percent sure if our job is to ask you guys a million questions about these things. I think us being the show is talking about how we feel about these things that have been presented. You guys getting to watch, maybe if you do a video later and come back with that information. So I think a lot of it is this that's supposed to be happening as opposed to this. So I, I just, I just want to make sure that maybe my understanding of this is, is clear. Because I don't want to keep bugging y'all. Every time I turn around, I'm asking you guys questions and like, you guys are doing your jobs. We just have to come to an understanding together so that we're, you know, I just, I just feel like we need to be having this kind of conversation instead of, you guys know what you're doing. And when we have the questions and there's that, correct me if I'm wrong, y'all can come up to the mic and tell us about that. But right now, it's kind of like, we're, we're making meaning right now between one, between each other. I think that's kind of what I'm getting at. So correct me if I'm wrong.
So in that vein.
Remember Kayla, go ahead.
You're welcome to sit down if you'd like, because I'm just proposing to respond to member Phillips. I would love to sit down if I were you right now, so. I really appreciate you bringing this up. I will say I do support this program as I understand it. But I think the concerns you bring are ones we really need to look at for this and also for all of our investments. I do not want to create a school district where we have a lot of underperforming students in underserved schools. And then we have a couple magnet schools that are trying to take a handful of kids from their districts or serving the kids who need it the least, right? But I do think there are benefit in programs like this, notwithstanding that comment. And the reason that I think it is, is when we offer programs that maybe a certain, you know, privileged group might want, but if we make them available to everyone in our district, then we're actually uplifting our entire community. And this program, I think, is that. But I would, you know, appreciate when we're looking at making these investments, that staff would look at, hey, let's make sure we're not just barely covering the increasing costs by the ADA we're getting. And let's make sure this is not just serving one population. But to the extent that we can do specialized programs that are fully available, and, you know, even if we don't embrace that, you know, paid for transportation cost district wide, for specialized programs in particular, if you live by Keith McKenna, I think you said, and you want to go to William Land for this program, you should know about that. And at the very least, we should support that.
Right. And, and I'm just going to quickly answer. And if, if there's a way superintendent that you could figure out what kind of barriers there would be to children coming into an immersion program after a certain amount of time. I don't know, like I said, what California law says, and also to, you know, look, look into, to barriers to just being able to have it available to our, our students. Lotto, like, how do you get in? And if you're in, can you stay in? And if you want to come in late, can you come in late? And if you have to test in, I don't know how that's supposed to work if you're in the second grade and can't read.
Thanks. I agree with that request. And then I just have one final comment. I've said this before, but let's not let a good budget go to waste. We have an opportunity now to, you know, create a, create programs that will be here twenty five years from now when we're going to be celebrating them. So let's do it right. I very much appreciate, and like others have said, I really respect the massive amount of expertise in the front row here tonight. But this is not the only knowledge in our district, and let's work with everyone to make sure we get it done and that we can do it in a way that we're committed to. But thank you very much to everyone for bringing this. I really appreciate the work. And like member Villa said, this is what people have been asking for. You know, I, I think there's pretty much nothing you didn't capture. So thank you for the hard work.
Make sure I got this right, member Phillips.
Okay, I'm going on the record about elementary sports. Sorry, Jess Jean, I'm so sorry. I, I know that there are elementary sports, and if we're going to be, again, I'm looking at barriers for students who have high suspension rates and high disciplinary rates and also have problems with academic performance. So usually you want to participate in sports and you get grades. Right? We're looking at extra funding from parents who may not have money to be able to get their kids whatever uniform or whatever gear they need. You know, it, it comes down to the fact that, you know, we might be pulling kids out of recess because they're not acting right in class. And then we're getting in the minute, middle of their minutes for, like, there's all these things that are, they're tied to. Like, I look at these so differently. And, and I, you know, there, there are barriers to participation in these things. And they're so very specific to these children that we have to, every time we think about something that is good and we've heard from the community, we have to list, think about the communities that we have not heard from and those who may not be able to be heard from. So I, I just, but yeah, I literally just put, I said, would we be setting up our black students for failure by adding certain barriers to participation such as poor grades, poor attendance, and economic barriers to participation? So that's kind of how I'm looking at everything. So you guys, the next two years is going to be fun.
Member Singh.
So, sports. From my experience, sports has actually helped kids who otherwise need some sort of support system, some discipline. Coaches oftentimes act as mentors and provide students with some type of authority, authority figure without actually being an authority figure. So I think for me, it's really, we can, I think we can address some of those things by kind of addressing the barriers to get into those sports teams. But oftentimes you'll see that students who are succeeding in sports are schools that have access to some of the most quality sports equipment, for example. And our students who don't have access to those things are already at a disadvantage. And when you keep going through the systems, you end up at a high school or a middle school that doesn't have access to those same things, then you're not going to have the same opportunity as a student athlete. Like, I guess a good example is if you look at, I don't want to use specific school examples, I would definitely not do that. But I will say that there are certain schools in our district who have access to high quality sports equipment, sports fields. And students are essentially to some level recruited to go there for their sports abilities. From an equity lens, students from every school should have access to the equipment and the support systems when it comes to sports to be able to succeed and excel in sports. I'll give you a simple example. I know at Hiram Johnson, we don't have shooting machines. I'm not sure which high schools do, but I know that Johnson definitely doesn't have shooting machines. And that's very specific basketball thing, right? You have a machine that helps you, captures the ball and then shoots it right back to you so you can shoot more, which should essentially help you become a better shooter. But Johnson is an old high school. Johnson does not have the type of gym and flooring. And I was there for middle school championships. You were there, superintendent? And a couple of times people just stepped on the wire and this is a championship game, so the, the clock went out two, three times, right? This is a middle school championship and we're holding it at a high school where people are tripping over an electric cord seated next to the scoring table. So it's just like little investments, little things to provide students with the experience that they deserve if they're going to be on a public sports team. And I think you start early, but I'm happy and I agree with you that we need to address the barriers on if you create more barriers where kids can't even join the teams, who's actually getting the ability to have athletic experiences to enrich their educational experiences.
Okay. Is anyone else? And I appreciate that. So thank you very much, because I'm not the biggest sports person. But I, that, it, it, every time we talk about something, it points to something else. So you said, you know, that you get a certain level of authority or you get whatever you're getting, that might be a positive for that child, which points me back to wellness, which is where the school's job is not to raise children. And again, that might be leaning into community schools, like whether we're going to be, you know, I don't know, supporting more with our budget funds for community schools. Because strengthening the parents is most likely going to be beneficial to our students. And so as far as I'm concerned, if I have a child who does not have a father figure at home, and maybe it's just me, and it probably is because I only speak about myself, but it's, it's, it can be complicated because we don't want that artificial authority to be, be thought of as permanent, because eventually it's going to go away. And I know that some people build those lasting relationships with, with, you know, I guess staff members and people that they encounter. But again, strengthening the, the families, and, and this is probably just me coming from, you know, the social worker perspective, is where I'm like, there is no quick fix for a child not having a parent in the home. Schools' job is not to do that. We are here to educate, but we are also here to support and empower. So I, 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 I kind of like, I veer away from, you know, sports as something that's going to, I guess, supplement some, something that's missing in a family. What it's doing is adding some extra to that particular child in terms of them participating in a painting in a sport, but not being a parent figure. And so, I mean, maybe you can speak to that, but it just makes me think again about wellness and empowerment and supporting our families so that they can support their children.
Go ahead, member Singh.
I want to call Ray up to the podium. Yes, because we've actually kind of discussed this, and I just want to make it really quick in case he has something to add. But we have talked about having, I, I think authority is a wrong word. Maybe I shouldn't have used authority. But coaches, assistant coaches, folks like this play a role in some of the lives of our children in which they develop relationships which lead to safer environments. They have someone to lean on, someone to, someone that they trust that necessarily is not a teacher or a security officer. They have a whole new set of people that they can rely on and become their safe space. I doubt there's full anecdotal evidence that I can point to, but we've had this discussion. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Ray, on, on the, on the discussions that we've had around having adults on campus, but how even coaches and, and assistant coaches have played that role unofficially.
Right. Yeah, you know, even looking at our campus monitor across the district, we have, I mean, if you put all of our staff together, I was talking to Ron Hickey about this the other day, we only, we have about eighty total campus monitors, folks that can contribute to safety. And even with that ratio with our, with our enrollment, that's four hundred and seventy five students to one. You know, one of the things that we talked about was trying to streamline adding, adding a, a couple, five additional lead campus supervisors to kind of build in some of that relationship. But even in our conversation earlier this week, and in light of mental health, I think it's an opportunity, there's an opportunity to, you know, look at what does that support look like, right? And beyond a therapist, beyond a clinician, you know, who can we really engage to bring onto our campuses that maybe from a peer support lens? Because I know our county is, is, is building in a, a robust peer support model to address a lot of the, the engagement and relationships that help build resilience in our young people. And I think that it'd be great to kind of do like what they're doing, like kind of the context of internships for student supportive service counselors, but do something to build in lead campus or campus monitors in that, in that regard, you know, as an introduction or entry level role for, just to get the numbers up so that we can reduce the ratio. And I think there's potential in, in, in all of those conversations. You know, because really I think it's about bringing more adults on who, who can just have, just have engagement to start. And I think that's what the opportunity is.
Thank you, member Singh. Really quickly, guys, we are coming up to time. We have two other items. I am motioning to extend our meeting by another hour. I think that should do it. It's, it's fine, but we, for the next two items, if we get through it on the time here, it, we should be done in the next thirty, forty minutes. Can, all in favor of extending the meeting by hour, please raise your hand. No, we already, we already, we already did it once. You, I guess you were out. And so we're, we don't, we, we won't be able to finish our meeting. The council, we, we're going to be over by a lot of time. Just asking for legal recommendations of moving forward.
If by a majority, the board wants to continue and in violation of the board policy that says you can extend it once, you may do that. Otherwise, you may have the opportunity to postpone an item to a future board meeting.
Okay, so if the board would like to postpone items, we'll, we'll be postponing item ten point one and ten point two. Is there a motion? There's one motion to that? Is there a second to postpone item ten point? One, ten point two? Okay. All in favor? It would be, we would have to. Well, we would, we would try to make sure we're done by forty seven in the next couple of minutes. We would have to make sure that ten point one, ten point two, eleven point one, eleven point two, eleven point three would all be postponed. So what, what I'm saying then right now is that we have to make a motion to remove those things to the next meeting and so we can get to the last thing. Yeah, and there's a second. And she had questions. So we would, we would, what I'm saying is. And then all, all eleven point. Oh, that's basically what I'm proposing. Yes. Okay, one, two, three. All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. Motion passes. We will move those items to our next board meeting. Now going on to item twelve point O. Uh, now going on to item 12.0. Item 12.0 consent agenda. Huh? We just voted on it. Member Singh? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to pull, um, 12.1 F expulsions, number 20, 21, 22, and 23.
Number 20?
Oh, sorry. 20, 21, and 22.
20, 21, and 22?
Yes.
Okay. Um, motion to accept the consent agenda while removing items from 12.1 F, uh, 20, I'm sorry. From, what was the number again? Member Singh, I'm sorry. 12. what? That's okay. I got it right. 12.1 F, 20, 21, and 22. Um, do we have a second on that motion? Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Uh, now going to 12. F, uh, 12.1 F, item 20, 21, and 22. This was, um, voting on expulsions. Um, quick question, do we do that by group or individual?
President Rhodes, uh, the board should first vote on the remainder of the consent calendar. On the, oh, you voted on the entire consent calendar, removing those? I thought it was just to remove those.
Yes.
Yes. Each one should be individual.
Individual. Okay. Going on item 12.1 F, uh, number 20, can we get a roll call vote? We're on, uh, expulsion number, uh, 12.1 F, number 20. We're going to be doing a roll call vote on that expulsion. Member Jean.
I'm sorry, which one are we voting on?
Uh, 12.1 F, number 20.
Are we voting for approve or?
This is to approve.
This is to approve.
Okay. Aye.
Member Kayla?
Aye.
Member Phillips? Member Rhodes? Aye. Member Singh?
No.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Mr. Bassis, we're going to go over to 12.1 F, number 21. Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayla?
Aye.
Member Phillips? Member Rhodes? Aye. Member Singh?
No.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. 12.1 F, number 22. Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayla?
Aye.
Member Phillips? Member Rhodes? Aye. Member Singh?
No.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Um, whoop. Uh, future board meetings, locations, June 8th, June 22nd. Um, move to adjourn the meeting. Um, and then, uh, guys, we are going to be going quickly into a 15-minute, uh, closed session very quickly. No, this is, this is something different.
Oh.